...recording and then we'll pick this up. But I think he just left.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start the meeting now and then I'm gonna start the recording right after that.
Right.
There we go, we're starting the webinar, it's gonna be open to listening.
Great, I see we're live now. Welcome everyone to the Capitalist City Council Meeting for February twenty fifth. Before we get started, we're gonna have an announcement from our district clerk Chloe. Great, thank you Chloe. Now we're gonna go ahead and, uh, have these pledges of allegiance to the two stands. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to item two, presentations. We're gonna introduce, have the introduction of Central Fire Protection District's new fire chief, John Walbridge.
Everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, great. Uh, Mayor, Capitalist City Council, uh, city manager Jamie Goldstein, as well as the rest of, uh, the city staff and the constituents, uh, listening in. Um, thank you, thank you for inviting me to talk to the city council. I think, uh, all of us after a year of being, uh, isolated would love to have an in-person meeting, certainly myself. I look for opportunities to be out in amongst actual physical people as much as possible. But either way, thank you for the invite and, uh, you know, I just wanted to first take the opportunity to introduce, uh, you know, the new fire district. People probably haven't noticed and we're still entrenched in transition. Some of our, uh, fire apparatus that you see driving by display the new name and some of them don't. As you might expect, you know, over thirty, forty vehicles, it's gonna take some time to, uh, get everything in alignment. As well, as you still see, I'm still wearing the old Central Fires Protection District patch. The new ones are on order and they're coming, but as we're all aware of, supply interruptions have hampered a lot of different efforts throughout the course of these years, you're well aware. Um, but thank you, yeah, I'm a, I'm a local person, I grew up in the Live Oak area. Um, I currently live in Capitola and have been here for, since nineteen ninety-eight, so I'm one of your constituents as well. Uh, and, uh, you know, I've really enjoyed the city and, uh, as a, as a resident and I look forward to, uh, you know, future efforts between Capitola and your fire department, which is now Central Fire District of Santa Cruz County. Um, and, uh, just, you know, like I said, uh, I think, uh, in the past, uh, from, you know, my almost thirty years of experience with this fire department, fire district, um, previously, is that we've always had a good working relationship with, uh, the city of Capitola and its constituents. Um, and I look forward to that not changing certainly. Um, as far as the fire district, uh, you know, I've mentioned consolidation, uh, you guys are probably, everybody on, you know, listening in tonight is probably pretty familiar with what Central Fire Protection District was and we serve the communities of Capitola, SoCal and Live Oak. And with this consolidation, we've, uh, with the consolidation with Aptos, La Saba Fire Protection District, we now service, uh, in addition to those other three communities, we service, uh, La Saba Beach, uh, Rio Del Mar, Aptos, as well as, uh, Day Valley, uh, area. So, kinda give you an idea of the general outline without, um, being able to put it up on the screen. Um, but that's kind of the, the jurisdictional boundaries and, uh, I'm totally open to any questions. Uh, hopefully I've given you a pretty good idea of, uh, at least who I am in short, as well as the fire district. And, uh, I'm happy to take on any questions and again, thank you for the invite.
Thank you, can we have any questions from council? I see council member Kaiser Henry, great.
No question necessarily, but just, um, I'm excited for you, Chief Walberg. You were like one of the first people that I talked to when I was running for city council and it was really nice to connect and get your side of the story and so I'm just glad that you're, you're here as the chief, awesome.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Council member for transit, I see you, Henry.
Yeah, I did, um, maybe I missed this, uh, chief, where's the new headquarters gonna be?
Uh, so the new headquarters isn't moving, uh, yeah, as you know it over on Seventeenth Avenue, that's still gonna be our main administrative building.
That's the same, okay.
Yeah, and so really the only significant change that you might see or some of our business people in the community might see, and that's been going on now for over a year, is our old fire prevention division, which we call Community Risk Reduction, is now at the old Aptos headquarters, which is six nine three Forest SoCal Drive, just down the street from Capitola.
Okay, and then your plans to, um, help us with, uh, beach activities in ter- in terms of, uh, you know, or giny guards, et cetera?
Yeah, so, uh, we're, just saw an email now, we're starting to ramp up for the junior lifeguard instructor training, uh, that will be starting here in another month or so. Um, and then, uh, Jamie and I have a plan as far as a couple of years down the road, or about a year and a half from now, maybe even less, uh, we'll be looking at, uh, you know, maybe pr- uh, providing some more services as well.
And I assume you're working, uh, hand in hand with Nikki?
Uh, absolutely, yes, I did not mean to leave, leave her out of the fight there.
No, I didn't think you did, but, uh, you know, she's, just love her, doing a great job, so, back your work, you're better.
Any other questions?
Chief Walberg, what a pleasure it is to have you this evening, I'm so happy to have met you. Um, I, I also appreciate the collaboration you have with our city for our, our, um, our junior guard program and I hope to continue that, that conversation even further. Um, I, I have a question, what do you do with the old patches, what are you gonna do with all of them?
Collector's items. Yeah, they've become collector's items, we don't have any new ones left and I just turned off my video because it was starting to over-
I noticed, yeah.
My wifi, so, um, uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of patches coming off of, uh, shirts that are still serviceable, as well as patches that, uh, you know, are coming off shirts that are unserviceable, so they're gonna be collector's items pretty quick. Um, I'm gonna have a few myself, so if you're open to collecting or you're one of the collectors, I'd be happy to pass one on to you.
Oh, I think this is like many people here tonight, as well as our historical museum, um, person, Spencer Terry, probably would love to have one for his collection as well. I'm gonna use this opportunity to pitch our town hall, um, meeting together, chief, on March sixteenth. Chief Walbridge and myself will be hosting a town hall for the, for, um, folks at six P M. So if you wanna ask more questions or if you'd like to attend, please do so, the information will be on our website. Um, Chief Walbridge, thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're now moving on to item three, a report out on closed sessions. Uh, Samantha?
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. The council held closed session on the two items on the agenda and direction was given to staff, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item four, additional materials. Do you have any additional material submitted to the city after the packet was distributed?
Yes, there were two additional materials. One was received regarding item nine A, the review of the memorial program. And the second was regarding item nine B, the budget principle and goals item.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to item five additions and additions to the agenda.
Yeah, this stuff changes this evening.
Okay, fantastic, we'll go ahead and move on to then. Item six for public comments, this is for items not on tonight's agenda. I'll turn this over to staff to moderate if we have any questions from the public or comments.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody on the Zoom meeting with their hand raised to talk and I do not see any emails on public comment.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Chloe real quick to go ahead and make a comment of us going back live. Chloe, do you want to make that announcement?
Yes, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Or Jamie, oh, yeah. Sure, I believe we went live for CCTV where we're not on, do you want to just make that announcement?
Oh, yes, I don't know, Larry, I know that our technician was on his way, I'm not sure that we have been officially broadcast at this time. But the meeting is being recorded.
The report I got was that we were back online.
Okay, wonderful, so I'm alone here in chambers unaware, so we are live and on, yes, the Charter Communications Cable TV Channel Eight. We are being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at eight AM. And on Saturday, following that first rebroadcast at one PM on Charter Channel seventy-one and Comcast Channel twenty-five. And like mentioned earlier, the meeting is being recorded and will be available starting tomorrow on our website as well. Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
No, I apologize for just getting, just going with it, so you did great, thank you for jumping in on that one. Alright, we're going to move to item seven, this is for city council and staff comments, I'm going to go ahead and start with staff. Does staff have any comments at this time?
The only comment I would just like to make is that as a county, we've moved into the one B vaccination tiers, which includes a number of different occupations, including food occupations as well as occupations associated with, oh, childcare and teachers. So, if you work in one of those professions and you'd like to get a vaccine, if you want to get information about how to do so, we have a link on our website, which will take you to a clearinghouse that the county maintains to get you information. I do know vaccine supplies are extremely limited at this point, so it does take some persistence, but I've heard from a number of people who have gotten vaccines. So, if you're interested in doing it, I would encourage everybody to give it their best.
Awesome. Do we have any city council comments? Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to report back from my very first meeting of the Monterey Bay Air Resources District. I was pleased to be nominated based on Mayor Brooks's suggestion by the city of Santa Cruz mayor that I represent the city of Santa Cruz on the air resources board. And I just want to report, I went to my first meeting on February the seventeenth. And for many of you that may not be aware, the air resources board, it's a tri-county body that manages the particulate and ozone in the air in the Bay Area. And so if you ever have any issues with that, be sure to look up the Monterey Bay Air Resources District. And at this particular meeting, we didn't, the only issues that we discussed were relevant to Monterey County and other than, we didn't get a report on our air quality. And as we all are aware, our air quality is excellent and far exceeds state standards. And so, thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Story, you got me on that one. I see council member Peterson, Henry.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Much like Vice Mayor Story, I just wanted to give a quick report on one of the committees that I participate in on behalf of the council. A couple meetings ago, I was appointed as the council's representative to the Criminal Justice Council of Santa Cruz County. We had our first meeting, or at least the first meeting I was part of recently. A great group of people, our chief McManus is part of that as well. And at that meeting, I volunteered to participate in a new subcommittee of the group that's going to be looking at policy, criminal justice policy throughout Santa Cruz County. And if I'm not mistaken, and chief correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you are also on that committee, as well as former Santa Cruz mayor Justin Cummings and community activist and advocate Joyce Flynn, who I've also worked with on hosting some independent community meetings around racial justice and equity. So it's going to be a really good group, Supervisor Friend is on it as well. It's going to be a really great group of people and looking forward to working with everyone and continuing to work with Chief McManus on this particular group. And I'd be happy to pass it over to Chief McManus if he has any comments on that as well.
Yeah, thank you, council member Peterson, and I appreciate you mentioning the work that has gone on and is going to continue with the Criminal Justice Council. And you are correct, myself representing law and the undersheriff Mitch Medina are the members from the regular CJC who have been volunteered and looking forward to participating on the subgroup that you mentioned in your piece. So, thank you for the recognition and thank you for mentioning that, council member.
I see council member for trans, Henry.
Yeah, I'm going to have a little problem with one comment. I have two comments to make and mayor you could advise me as how to proceed on the second comment. I'm on the sanitation board and we recently received our annual report on activities. And I asked Matt Machado, who's the engineer in charge of that particular division, as he is for the whole county, to come up with a presentation for our board if appropriate. So he's going to contact you Jamie and see if something can be worked out. He's very anxious to do a presentation, which shouldn't take long, but that's up to you and scheduling. So the other thing I want to comment on is last meeting and comments from city council, I made about three different comments, one was captured, two weren't. And the one that I thought was very important was the fact that our budget has relaxed a little bit and I wanted to have the board address funding for nonprofits. So that's what I made at that point. And, you know, that was received well, so I'd like that captured in the meeting minutes. And so I don't know if I should talk about it now, but what I would like to do is, as I said then, have that be brought back to city council. I'm not too sure that I'm for the old committee arrangement that we used to have. If that continues, I'd like to be a member of that as well. But I like this whole thing brought back to city council so we can decide how to move forward, thank you.
Thank you, council member for trans. What I would suggest is maybe mention that again on item, a little bit later on the agenda, you might have an opportunity to do so. So, we will-
Do I know what you suggest?
Yeah, so you might get an opportunity to talk about that again on item nine B when we go over our principles.
Bring that up at nine instead of, okay, so, don't bring it up correcting city minutes.
And now we'll go, if there's no other council comments, we'll move on to item eight for consent calendar. And this is, all items listed on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the action. Members of the city council request specific items to be discussed for separate review. I'm going to take liberty to suggest that if there is a council member that makes this motion to include council member for trans amendments if possible, Samantha, if that's okay? Okay, great. So, if we can have a motion to include council member for trans edits to the item eight A for the minutes, do I have a motion?
Thank you, mayor. I'll make that motion to include the edits as detailed by the mayor.
And so is the motion to adopt the consent calendar with the alteration to the minutes as indicated for item eight A?
Yes, that's what I, yes.
Yeah, I'm just concurring with the mayor and so I'm making that motion.
Okay, great, thanks Vice Mayor Story.
Okay, so that item eight consent calendar passes with the edits to the minutes. We'll move on to item nine for general government. Nine A, review the memorial program and the recommended action tonight is to provide direction.
Mayor Brooks, I'm sorry to interrupt, do we take a vote on the consent?
Oh my gosh, I just skipped all over you guys, I was too excited about nailing that first one down. Okay, so let's bring it up, to roll call for item eight consent calendar, Chloe?
Absolutely, council member Kaiser.
Hi.
Council member for trans.
Aye.
Council member Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Aye, thank you so much, this is such a team effort, I appreciate your support. Okay, so now we'll move on to item nine A and I'll turn this to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Brooks, council members. I'm going to talk about our memorial program, I'm going to share the screen, hopefully this will go quickly. See my screen okay, the memorial program? Did you see this memorial program screen, I want to make sure, okay, great, thank you. So, we're here to talk about the memorial program. The reason we're mainly talking about this is, and we'll talk about later, is we're almost out of approved location spaces. But I want to kind of give a history of where this memorial program came from. It began back in the nineteen nineties primarily to defray and help pay for the purchase of benches in the city. You see benches are installed in the Esplanade, the Village, the Wharf Park, parks, including things like the, kind of the Prospect Park, you know, as well as Jade Street and places like that. At the time, we have quite a big file, each bench request came to the city council for approval. In two thousand and two, the city approved kind of a more comprehensive memorial program. The truth was, at that time, we were getting close to the end of benches, so they added things. But the way they did, the council approved the policy, is council approved location, general locations for benches, say the Wharf, plaques on the Depot Hill, and the number of spaces. Staff then processed those requests for the approved locations, kind of on a first come, first served basis. No more, individual requests were not coming to the council at that point. When the program was added, it kind of broadened out to include memorial plaques, not just benches. So, again, the original purpose was to pay for the benches. It became so popular, I honestly, I wasn't here at the time, but I can imagine it was, it was an option to offer more possibilities for memorials in the city. Primarily as far as numbers along the Wharf, if you've been out, the last time you looked at Wharf, along the railing there, as well as the railing along Grand Avenue on Depot Hill. Currently, the memorial program, if you include all the plaques and benches, lights, we do, we do have some lampposts in the Village, plaques, we have almost five hundred memorial spaces down there. About half of those are benches, I think a little over two hundred and thirty are benches. Right now, as we, as I mentioned initially, the reason we're here is the approved memorial locations are basically almost full. All ocean view locations, which I'll get to, have been taken. That is almost exclusively what people call about, is ocean, you know, they, so what, they start with things like, I want a bench in the Village, well, at this point, we don't have any, they go to the Wharf. So the last couple of years, we've been kind of directing people to the railing on Depot Hill and that's filled up too. Right now, there are some available spaces, we have some benches in the parks, primarily in Jade Street Park. We have about five, I think, and we have a couple up at the McGregor Multi-Use Park. But that's about it. A few years ago, we actually had to, we had a few benches that were destroyed during an El Nino event, remember when it rained? You know, they, they were destroyed, a couple of people didn't want to replace them. They, you know, they no longer were coming to Capitola and decided to do it. So, the council approved a lottery procedure for that. Because unfortunately, if we were, well fortunately, or unfortunately, if we were, have approved all the bench requests for the Village over the last few years, we probably have about another, oh, seventy-five to a hundred benches in the Village. So, there's a big demand, that's, there's a lot of people that want benches down there. As I mentioned, primarily, once in a while, we'll get a, we'll get a request for a park if someone had a very strong tie to it. But ninety percent of the requests are for a location with an ocean view. And that's why the last area that we filled up was the railing on Depot Hill, because that was kind of the, the last place we had that people could go out, see, remember their loved ones and see the ocean as well. So one of the things we've looked at is potential areas for expansion. Staff has identified really three potential areas that would, would allow the program to kind of grow for a few years. It clearly is not the same numbers, we're not getting five hundred, but we have some potential locations. There is a railing that overlooks Capitola Village and the ocean along Cliff Avenue and Depot Hill. So, that is a newer railing, that came into, that was built after the Grand Avenue railing, bless you. And so, that, this is a potential location, that, that is probably in the multiple dozens of potential spaces, maybe twenty-five or thirty. Generally, what we've allowed is a person kind of gets the space in between the posts, so usually eight to twelve feet. We do allow that person, if they have, if they want to put another one for a family member, they can have two, but that's where we limit it, because, you know, it becomes too much. So generally, each person gets access to the railing in between the posts. So, that's where we kind of get our numbers from. Another location is the wooden railing on Cliff Drive, not Cliff Avenue, Cliff Drive. And so you see, this is kind of the start of that area as it overlooks the Wharf. Again, great ocean view location, as we'll talk about later, there's potentially some issues there as well, but there, we, I think I figured that was in the neighborhood of fifty potential spaces there. The other, the other location we kind of addressed right off the bat is, we do have this, which is a result of some work we had to do. This is another potential location, it's clearly next to the ocean. It does have the ability to, to, we can put, you know, the same sort of plaques in there as well. It was just kind of the third option we had, you know, truthfully, it's a more troubled, it's a more difficult location for sure. As we mentioned, the primary reason for choosing those locations, they are next to the ocean. And that's clearly where the demand is. They all have kind of potential concerns, the Cliff Avenue, Cliff Drive, location in Depot Hill could possibly increase traffic as, you know, foot traffic as well as, you know, car traffic along that area, which is primarily residential. Currently, there are some benches there already, for sure, so people use it. But if you were to add, you know, the number twenty-five or thirty, I forgot the exact number of plaques, it could increase that number of people. Cliff Drive, you know, the location, the amount of space available as you go further up Cliff Drive becomes a little more difficult because it's right up against the bike lane, which is right against the road. Not exactly as peaceful of a location to come, come see a memorial as, you know, Depot Hill or even the Wharf. But, you know, it could be a subset up there that would be able to accommodate some that wouldn't be quite as busy. The Esplanade Park location may not be permanent, you know, it was, it was put there because of falling, you know, cliff issues and we all know that those don't necessarily stop. So it may be something that we have to adjust and possibly remove in the future. So, you know, it's, it's not something we can control, so that, that was one of the concerns there. One of the other places, we do get quite a few requests, you know, for benches, this is the Prospect Bluff Park, which is on the other side of the railroad tracks, kind of overlooking the ocean. And I just want to mention that one of the, that is actually not city property, it is leased and we were, we're given right to access it. And as part of the original agreement, there were no more benches added, so if anything were to be added up there, we'd have to- So, if anything were to be added up there, we'd have to change our, our right to enter agreement with, um, the person who's, who actually leases it, I believe at this point, from the RTC. Um, but, you know, it, it's a very popular location as well. Um, so, one of the other issues is that, you know, the, the amount of kind of real estate that the city has for these plaques would increase. So, it, it may change the, you know, as, as they kind of go up either Cliff Drive or Cliff Ave, it's just more and it's whether or not the, the council wants to go in that direction. Um, one of the other options we, we, we looked at is, is to quote, a multiple memorial option. And one of the kind of nearest places we had something similar to this was in Sea Cliff, uh, at the end of the, the, kind of past the campground before, went into private area. Um, there was a wall, as this is kind of an older picture. Um, the other option is possibly memorial pavers or bricks, just so you know, the Chamber still has a brick program in, in the Village. So, there is, even if we didn't have that, there is an option there. Um, the memorial wall option, the Sea Cliff wall i- is actually no longer there as far as I know. I haven't been down there in a few years, but it was a controversial thing. Um, but that would be another potential option to maybe not cover as much of, of city area with memorials, but kind of more of a concentrated location, if that's the council's direction. Um, one of the things, we, we haven't, we honestly have not identified a, a ideal location for this. As we look at a lot of things down here, there's very, there's very limited free space, especially with near the ocean. You know, everything is pretty well used, so that would take a little while to figure out where the best location. And, you know, not, by putting something up like that, not kind of impact other uses for that area. Um, you know, one of the, the other things is depending on how it is, we may have to have someone outside city staff. Right now, all the city, the plaques are installed by the Public Works Department. Um, they can, they can do the plaques on the wood, that's not a problem. But if we kind of change things, we're putting, you know, engraving or anything else into, you know, a, a, a wall or something like that, it may, we may have to have someone do that. Um, one, one nice thing is that it could be done in kind of groups. We could, you know, I know for a fact that's what the Chamber does, is they wait till they have X number before they go out and, and do it all at once. So, it may not be as heavy of an impact as they are right now. Um, you know, we get, we've gotten a lot, actually, I mean honestly, we've gotten a lot more interest in this since, since COVID started. I mean, I think people are spending more time down there and seeing them. So, um, you know, over the last year, it, the requests definitely have gone up. So, that is an impact, um, especially on our Public Works Department. Um, so right now, um, what staff is looking for is kind of direction of how to proceed with the program. One option is to continue with the program until all the current spaces are filled, and then either close it or come back to the council for more, for further direction. Um, we could look into kind of more detailed locations for expansion of the memorial plaque program in a similar fashion. You know, plaques on, we find more bench locations, which is a little difficult because, again, there's not a lot of extra room for those. Um, find other locations, as we presented, um, for plaque locations, you know, on railings, that sort of thing. Or investigate options for kind of a multiple memorial installation. And so, as I mentioned, we're just kind of looking for direction to move forward, so if it wants to continue. Um, you know, if there's a preferred option for how to expand the program, we'll, we'll come back with that option for you. Um, and that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Larry. Um, do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, is there a, a difference in the price of these memorial sites based on if they're a tree or a bench, or if they're ocean view or not?
Yeah, the, the prices are different between a plaque and a bench. Those are two, the two different. We don't, we don't, we don't change the, the price of the bench if it's at a park or if it's at Esplanade because the cost for maintaining and everything's the same for the city regardless of location.
Okay, and I think you answered a question I had about the bricks in the Village. So, that's technically a chamber, uh, project, correct?
Yes.
We couldn't, or, or do we list those as a memorial option in our, would it, could we? Even if it said, hey, this is a memorial option, but it's not from the city, it's through the Chamber?
You know, we, we actually used to do that, we, with our memorial, we said, hey, if you're in, if you are interested in memorial brick, or they call it a brick program, contact the Chamber.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, we had kind of put that on hold as the Chamber was kind of, you know, dealing with the, the COVID issues. I believe they are ready to kind of start back up with that. Um, so, yes, that is definitely something we will, even, regardless, we'll be, if someone's interested in there, we'll, we'll, we'll head in that direction.
Right, and then my final question is, um, these three options of where we could potentially add new memorial plaques, do we need to choose one, or can we say, yeah, let's do all of these?
I, you can do, you can give the direction however you'd like. These, these were just the three, and there may be more. Like I said, we, you know, I, I want, we wanted to get kind of what the, the council's overall direction was before we kind of dug into each, each location. Um, these, these were kind of the three, based on what we do now, as well as, as I mentioned over and over again, the desire to have an ocean view while doing this.
Okay, and then, okay. Uh, my final question is the, um, the ceramic tiles along the seawall in the Village that people painted. I, I'm not sure if that was a Chamber project, or an Art and Cultural Commission project, or what that was. But is there any talk of, of doing something like that and adding it to our memorial program? And finding a place where people could actually create their own ceramic tile in a, in a memorial space or wall? Or has, has that been discussed at all? Because I know we have a couple of different places in the city where we have those kind of, uh, painted tile art exhibits.
Yeah, that program was, was kind of in coordination with both the Chamber as well as the Art and Cultural, and, and honestly, we hadn't looked at that as an option, as of yet.
Okay, cool. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Story?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Larry, um, when we issue a plaque, um, or even a bench, is it in perpetuity?
The, the language is, as long as it is functional. So, if, especially at the bench, this is, this is really more of a bench issue. When the bench no longer becomes useful, we give the, 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 I would say owner, but whoever has the plaque, kind of the first right of refusal. And that's what we, that's how we ran into the, the lottery issue, without the lot, we created the lottery because we had a couple benches destroyed. I think there were five benches. Three ended up wanting new benches and two did not. Um, and so, we, we offered it to them, they said they didn't want it, and that's where the, the council agreed on this lottery process, um, for that. So, it's, you know, we, we don't, we don't give a ten-year or anything like that because truthfully, some of these benches are, 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 they're twenty-five years old at this point. We're not going to just replace them to replace them at this point, so.
Right, yeah. Um, but the plaques are, they're, they're issued in perpetuity, um, short of destruction?
Well, yeah, or if they don't want them anymore. Like I said, if, if the bench, if the benches no longer, yeah, the, the, right, the, the plaques themselves, as soon, if they disappear, you know, which we've had a few, um, we give the, the folks an option to, to replace it. If they don't replace it, then it would, it would fall under the same sort of thing.
Yeah, okay. Um, and my other question, I didn't notice on Grand Avenue, uh, our, um, policy says that the plaques are to be at least eight feet apart. Is there a particular reason why eight feet was selected? Is there?
I think that's the, that's the standard width between the posts. To be honest, we have a couple of locations where that hasn't necessarily followed because we're trying to give, offer people these things. Um, and there are some locations on Grand Avenue that we're not putting available because of, they're completely obscured by bushes and things and, or, you know, physical impairments. But I think eight feet is the standard, um, width of those railings. It's not a hundred percent, but, so we've, since I've been doing this and I've heard, is we basically say, the, 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 the people who get the plaques get the spaces between the two, the two posts.
I see, okay. But it would be feasible to, you know, maybe have shorter distances between the plaques that gives us more room? Um.
Yeah, it would, it would take some work because there, the, the existing ones would have to be kind of removed and, because they're all, most of them are put in the center of whatever that is. So, if it's eight feet, then, you know, you, you don't want them kind of off to the side, but it is definitely possible.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I did want to, I did want to chime in on, on something the councilmember Story said about sort of the, the length of time. That is one of, was there, that is a pretty central concern that I would have about the Cliff Drive and the Esplanade Park location. That, you know, the split rail fence, um, at Cliff Drive, it is not, it's not sort of the same as, as building something on the Wharf necessarily, or the Cliff, Depot Hill, the Cliff Avenue, um, location. In addition, the Esplanade Park fence wasn't really intended to be the permanent end-all-be-all solution. It could be there for quite a while, but it is a challenge when people get these brass plaques where the brass itself lasts virtually forever. Um, it's really a question of the, the, the medium in which it is mounted, how long that is around. And so, it's just something to think about because obviously, the more these things churn, if the, the physical space where they're installed um, needs to be taken out, uh, it can be a lot of work then to go track down these folks and find out whether or not they want to pay to have them remounted or not. Um, there's just a lot to it.
Manager, any other questions? Okay, um, so I do have one question, and this is for staff or maybe our liaison for Arts and Cultural Commission, Vice Mayor Story. Um, has, I, what I'm hearing is there's actually lots of different options and lots of different areas of opportunity here to continue this program. Um, has this been vetted through the Arts and Cultural Commission? Was this something that goes through them or has gone through them in the past to, to decide where and how? Because it seems to me that there's this kind of artistic take on it. Um, has, was this in the past something that the, the commission decided on or supported in, in the past?
You know, when the tile project happened down on the Esplanade seawall, the Arts Commission was involved in that because it was a very public, that was public art project, and we did that in conjunction with the Chamber. Um, and, um, but, you know, the, just the strict, the place through this memorial program, no, we don't get involved in that. Um, and if, but if a, if the council was interested in a similar tile project, um, yeah, it's something that I think the Arts Commission could and should be involved with because, you know, we are talking about public art, and sometimes you have to bring in a lot of, of people to make sure that you get the right, um, um, you know, outcome.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions before we move on to public questions or comments? Okay, CNN, do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone with their hand raised, and let me check on the email, sorry. And I do not see any emails on this issue.
Okay, so we'll bring this back for, um, council comment, and it just looks like you're looking for some directions. Do we have any direction from council at this time on this item? Uh, Councilmember Kaiser?
Yeah, so I am super interested to see if, if we do need to go through the Cultural Commission, um, Arts and Culture. Um, and then again, working with our city people, what is going to be most feasible? If all of the options are options, like that to me seems pretty, pretty cool and could open up more opportunity. Um, my big thing was the Prospect Ave kind of area, but learning from Larry that that is not our property, so that makes total sense. Um, I don't know if there's any leeway there as well because that is such a good view, um, in a space where a lot of people hang out. I don't know if we can, um, rally with them at all. But, um, I think that this program is pretty cool, and I want to be able to maintain it to the best of our ability as, as far as, um, working as a city and working with the public too.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Peterson?
I like the idea of, um, the wooden railing up on Cliff Avenue, up on Depot Hill. Um, and, and as Councilmember Kaiser mentioned, the, um, learning that up on Prospect Avenue wasn't really our property would take a little bit more work. But I like the idea of the wooden railing on Cliff Avenue. I'm wondering if we could open the space on the upper Esplanade wall, but maybe add some kind of clause or something for people that choose the plaque in that space, letting them know that this is, you know, um, a little bit more subject to the elements based on the fact that there's been some, um, erosion on that cliff and that it's less. I, I don't know, just, just some kind of a warning, um, so that people know what they're getting into when they, when they choose that space. But I do think it's a beautiful space that could also be used for these kinds of memorials. So, I would personally recommend that we move forward with those two. And then in addition to that, um, and, and forgive me, I might need staff to step in. I don't remember exactly what we decided that the, uh, protocol was for sending something to a committee, but maybe we could ask the Arts and Cultural Committee if they would be interested in, um, reviewing sites in town for another potential tile project that would allow people to create their own memorial tiles, um, much like the one in the Village and the one on, uh, the corner of Monterey and, and Park, uh, that has all the, the kind of recreation activity, uh, painted tiles. So, the tile one is kind of a future project that maybe a committee would like to look into, but of course, we can't force them to. Um, otherwise, I would make, uh, a motion that we move forward in opening memorial plaques on Cliff Avenue on Depot Hill and at the upper Esplanade wall, um, with an additional clause for the upper Esplanade wall, letting people know that, that there is a, a danger of, um, environmental erosion, or something of that nature.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Story, your hand is raised.
Yeah, um, well, one, I want to, I, I think reaffirm my support for this memorial program overall. Um, I think it's important for us to, um, to kind of be involved with families if they're losing their loved ones and providing a beautiful place for them to have a, a remembrance. Um, I know I see quite a few of them when I go walking around, um, the community and, and, and here on Depot Hill. Um, and, um, they're frequently, you know, the plaques of the area around them are decorated with flowers or other things, um, in remembrance of, of, um, people's loved ones. So, um, I just want to reaffirm, I think, the importance of maintaining the program. Um, I second in the motion because I think that we should look at expanded spaces. And the, and the three that the staff have recommended, um, I think that, um, we should include those. Um, I agree with Councilwoman, uh, Peterson that we should include the, uh, wall on Esplanade Park. I know it may be temporary, but all of these fences are temporary to some degree or another. Um, and if, at, at any point where it's torn down or something else is going to be built there, and maybe the plaques could, um, transition to whatever the, uh, new infrastructure is. Um, I would also, um, think that we could maybe, in our program, um, shorten the minimum distance between plaques from eight feet. Um, I don't know why there's a particular distance, but it may be able to, um, give us more, uh, room to add plaques. And I think lastly, I want to emphasize, you know, no matter how much, how many spaces we allocate, and, as time goes on, they're gonna, we're gonna run out of space. Um, so, I think that at, at some point, the people, I think we're going to be forced to either look at, um, somehow phasing out and so that allowing new people, um, uh, to, um, benefit from the program. Because I imagine over decades, um, some of these, um, you know, families move on, um, and the plaques become less significant to them. So, I think that is a reality of Capitola, and one that maybe future councilmembers are going to have to face. Um, so those are my comments, and, um, I appreciate being able to, um, discuss it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand, your hand is raised?
Yes, it was. Um, yeah, I support the motion, and I was thinking about amending it, but, you know, listening to Sam, you know, you know, we probably might reach a steady state of some sort where things come and go in the natural course of things. But I still kind of like what Larry mentioned, is trying to find a wall, such as the one that was on the beach a little bit south of us, which I saw, which was very impressive. That wall was very special to people. The fact that there were so many different plaques there of all sorts of different designs, which was another feature that made that place interesting instead of just a certain type of design. So, you know, I hope we keep that in mind, you know, if we find that there's more need in the future, or maybe this reaches a steady state, so some people drop off and create new space. But finding a permanent place for a wall of some sort.
Great, thank you, councilmember. I appreciate the motion on the table. I just would add that, I think, just as some comments to it, Riston Park could be a possible great place for a potential wall, as we think about that. And I just heard, just for feedback, a lot of, or just for comment, that there's a lot of work that has to go into, into these plaques and having to put them out there on the program is time-consuming. It's a, it's a lot for staff to take on, and I'm just curious whether there would be any possibility of partnering with the, the Chamber on this, since they've done this before and have some kind of, if there's any way for them to alleviate the project and what it, how it's kind of, how much we do within the city, maybe there's some opportunity there for partnerships. So I just would like to add those comments there. Okay, so it looks like we have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call? Oh, councilmember Peterson, your hand is raised?
Yeah, sorry, I have one final comment, and this isn't part of the motion, but just something that I think is worth considering, and I can bring it up to the BIA as an option if it's something that would even make sense. But I know a lot of our restaurants have Oceanside or Creekside Dining, and there's wooden kind of wall railings on those restaurants. And I'm wondering if there was, would be an opportunity for restaurants to opt in to something like this, so that families who maybe, you know, went to a certain restaurant every week, to a certain table or something, could say, I would really like to have a memorial plaque along the beach at Zelda's or overlooking the creek at Paradise, or something along those lines. So I think that's something worth considering as we move forward, to allow restaurants to opt into this so that people can also put plaques there should they choose to participate. So I just wanted to throw that out as an option for something that we might want to consider in the future. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for our motion here, or a roll call? Any other hands? I'm checking the panelists. I see no hands raised. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi. All right, folks, moving right along that item path unanimously. Thank you, councilmembers. Moving on to item nine B, consider fiscal year 21, 22 budget principles and goals. I'll turn this over to staff.
I think I needed to unmute before I share my screen. Let's see if I got that down in the right order this time around. Okay, here we go. Okay, everyone, see me, hear me, and see the screen. I'll take that as a yes. I see a thumbs up. All right, so this is a process we go through every year before we prepare the budget, and it's an opportunity for the city council to talk a bit about their goals for the next fiscal year. You know, we kind of try to break our process into, into laying out sort of the high-level principles offered the city, which generally don't change much year to year about how we approach a budget. And then we dive into more sort of the details, the programs, the projects that the council would like to see done each year. You know, one of the things I always like to stress for people is that, you know, the city budget is in some ways like the city's, you know, kind of blueprint for its activities. It really, it lays out what we're going to be working on in any given year, and it sort of articulates for the council, for staff, for the public, about what we're going to be doing in this next year. I talked a little bit about kind of this difference between sort of like the budget principles provide the overarching kind of framework for what we're doing and why we're doing it, the goals. Then identify kind of a little bit lower level, a little bit more specificity, and then the key projects and programs, which would be kind of the line items that you would then tend to see within the budget or within the budget narrative. We've broken our basically high-level principles into three categories in the past, so I'm going to briefly kind of touch on them and see if anybody wants to talk about changing them or if we're good with them in sort of a go-forward basis. We talk about our fiscal principles, our public service principles, and then our public improvement principles. On the fiscal side, we talk about maintaining a balanced budget that has to do with, you know, making sure that the revenue in matches the revenue out each year, but we aren't deficit spending, that we're then also using one-time revenues for one-time expenditures, and assure that the budget that we're planning ahead, looking at what we think the revenues are going to be like in the future, and we're not setting up future city councils for problems by, you know, sort of backing them into a corner with costs. On public service principles, we talk about kind of maintaining and improving upon the transparency and access to the government, recognizing the high priority that our community places on public safety and our police department, and then always balancing the sort of this long-term service level, looking long-term at service level increases to make sure that our service level increases can be matched with the resources and the revenue that we're going to be receiving over the long run. And then on the public improvement principles, we talk about maintaining our city's infrastructure to the maximum extent that we can, given limited funding. This is always a real challenge in the pavement management street world. Maintaining and improving our natural resources and sustainable green programs. And then maintenance, focusing on the maintenance, you know, was obviously a real challenge for us this year with the budget cuts that we had to make around COVID, but really trying to focus on the Village and overall maintenance and make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure the streets, sidewalks, city facilities are taken care of the way we'd all expect. I think I talked a little bit about why identifying the key projects. I think to some degree it really helps staff when we're developing the budget and helps focus the council, you know, because things always come up over time, but this gives us an opportunity to take a step back and really try to be strategic about what it is that we want to work on next year. You know, in some ways, I think when, when we look at other things that come up, it makes sure that we sort of have these other things in mind, that we're able to make sure that we're not, you know, shelving maybe the big picture for maybe some smaller picture stuff that comes up during the course of the year. So one of the things that we have typically done is recommended, council try to identify five or six kind of key projects or programs that we can really focus on and make sure that they're sort of the focus for the fiscal year. In the past, we, past, what we did, what we did last year actually was we had this meeting, and I think literally the next day, the governor told everybody to shelter in place. And we never really took the next step after kind of going through, getting the feedback from the council at this meeting last year. What we ended up doing was really developing a budget, was there was a bare-bones budget, just keeping the lights on. So what we're going to do this year is we're going to get the feedback from staff, from council, and then incorporating that and then, you know, putting it into the budget for final adoption when we adopt our budget. And what we tended to do in the past and seems to work pretty well is each council member can identify projects and programs that they would like to see. Jim is going to be helping us out, maybe taking notes and noting when council members agree with each other or have similar sorts of goals, and then we can look at them as a group. I do want to talk about, so this is, this is what we did last year. For those of you that remember this meeting, I remember taking these notes. A lot of great ideas. Some of the things we still did get done. You know, we did, talking about the library, the jetty, the flume, those were still projects that continued to move forward. We don't have all the permits for the wharf, but we might by the time we adopt our budget. But there, these were, this is included in this attachment in your staff report, and this was the outcome out of the meeting last time that was never really moved on for adoption. And then in your staff report, you'll notice that I called out a number of sort of big-picture key projects that I think about for next year. I want to be really clear that I don't actually think we should do all of these. I think a lot of them, some of them are going to be pretty controversial or may involve a lot of, a lot of hearings, a lot of, you know, potential council bandwidth. So I think we want to be strategic about which one of these we actually decide that we would want to tackle, if any. In some cases, I think it's worth noting, I want to bring these up, maybe not because they're going to actually happen, it may not be a priority this next year, but in some cases, for example, the City Hall Pacific Cove site one, I would really say that, you know, five years from now, if we haven't focused on it at some point, you know, we will, really will be in trouble. It's been a long-term issue that does need attention at some point. I'm not sure that 21, 22 is the time to do it, but I will leave that up to council and for you guys to deliberate and think about. So the ones that I called out in the staff report, mall redevelopment, this is a really important one. I know for the council, for the community, for staff, for everybody. But it is one that's not necessarily totally in our control, because at this point it's on hold with the developer. The zoning code has been a focus for the city for a long time. We have good news. We believe we're going to get a hearing in front of the Coastal Commission later this winter, and we're hoping to be able to maybe wrap this project up relatively soon, which would be great. The efforts, councilmember Bertrand talked about this a bit at the beginning of the meeting. You know, I think that we need to refocus our community grant process efforts. We really put that hole on hold a year ago, but reinvigorating that effort. Updating the city administrative policies, that was something that Mayor Brooks called out in our workshop. We have a lot of policies that probably do need updates, but that's also going to take up, everyone needs to know, a fair amount of room on agendas, as a lot of the items do require, you know, council approval. So that's just something everyone needs to know, that it's going to be a priority. It's going to take up some council bandwidth and staff bandwidth. The long-term plans for City Hall, I mean, I think this is a pretty well-discussed issue. I assume most of you are all well aware of it. Oops, trying to go back. Trying to move the, the camera because it's right covering up the item, and I couldn't read it. The issue with the City Hall side is really, you know, City Hall is in the flood plain. We experienced a flood in 2011. You know, I've heard people say that if the termites stop holding hands in the City Hall building, the building might just fall down. So, you know, it is, it's a building with a lot of issues, and I think developing a long-term plan, whether it's, you know, continuing to invest in the site and renovating it and making it work for the city for another 50 years, or whether it's finding a different site. That's what I mean by trying to find a long-term plan for the site, you know, it's figuring out what makes the most sense. Again, I'm not sure that this, now is the time to do this. My inclination probably would be to wait, but I do want to just sort of toss it out there so we can begin to think about it, even if it's for the next year or the year after. Village parking rates, this is something that's come up a couple of times. The parking meters, I think the rates were last changed on them around 10 years ago, maybe a little bit longer. In addition, councilmember Bertrand has brought up, and the fact has been looking a little bit at some of the rates that we charge for some of the exchangeable permits. Again, this can be a pretty controversial issue, and, you know, we might want to think about some sort of task force or some sort of specific group to work on this, but it could be time, maybe next year as well. Outdoor dining, this is one that we probably are going to have to focus on. The outdoor dining is going to, in theory, come to an end, the program that we have today, as we wrap up the pandemic. And I suspect that there's going to be a lot of a push for reconsidering our parklet program that we had several years ago, that pilot program, and what we want to do. Do we want to make a long-term plan around outdoor dining beyond the pandemic? And I would assume that that's something that we would want to get in front of rather than reacting to it once, once we tell people they need to get out of the park, the street. This one actually did come up briefly last year, and there wasn't much discussion about it, but, but we have been talking to the school district about, you know, New Brighton Middle School and Monterey Park, and is there an opportunity to collaborate, to improve the recreational amenities? If we really think about it as kind of one shared green space between the two entities. It's, it's kind of a, it's a neat project. We need to do some more work, if the council would like to, to figure out with the school district what might fit there, and then think about what the relationship would be between the school district and the city, and then ultimately find funding. So it's, it's not a one-year project, but, but it could be a fun one to start working on. And then this last one is, is really a new idea, and this has come about because, you know, the city of Scotts Valley has been hit hard, as everyone has, by the pandemic, and they really don't have a recreation program anymore. And so the city manager for Scotts Valley reached out to me and asked whether or not we might be able to provide some recreational services in Scotts Valley. You'll remember that we already have a partnership with the city of Scotts Valley around a shared building official. So this kind of, the concept is to try to look for opportunities to leverage the resources that we each have to do things maybe more efficiently, better, cheaper, faster, that kind of thing. If this was going to be something that we were going to work on, they, Scotts Valley has said that they might be interested in something happening this summer, which would require pretty quick movement. And I can more than happily answer questions about kind of what, Nikki has done some work as well to look at what this might look like or how it might work. More than happy to answer questions if council wants more information about what some sort of partnership might look like with Scotts Valley Recreation. And with that, we're really looking for your direction, you know. If council can identify some of the things they would like to see next year, the high-level, you know, confirm that the high-level budget principles were on the right track. If council members wanted to identify and then maybe try to narrow down to five or six key projects, that would be great. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, we'll return to questions. Councilmember Peterson?
I just have a quick question. In the packet on page 35, it says the Coastal Commission zoning code is expected to be certified in spring of 21, but then on 36, it says we're expecting a hearing for late winter. So are we expecting that to be completed in spring or in winter?
Think that we were, we think that it's going to go to hearing. Katie, I believe our direct community development director's on, on the call, and I think we have a tentative date for Coastal Commission hearing?
Yes, we were scheduled for March, but we just got word that they had to push us back to the April hearing. So I think it's the second week of April.
Okay, so the hearing's in April, but we don't expect it to be done until winter?
Oh, then we will bring it back. So I would say spring of this year. So the hearing is in April, and then we'll bring it back to the city council to bring forth the modifications that they're requesting. And at that step, the city council has the ability to adopt those changes. And then it would take, it would be the new zoning code for all of Capitola.
Perfect, okay, I get it now. Okay, thank you. And then...
Well, we said winter 21, I'm sorry. We were talking about like coming up here in the next month.
Still in winter, before we hit, okay, I get it, sorry, okay. That makes sense. And then my other question, in regard to the community grants, so tonight it sounds like is just the night to suggest that the community grant funding is one of our top priorities, but the actual, I mean, we're, we're getting a budget update in March, right? So that would be the time to actually start looking at how much we would fund and who we would fund and all that. Is that correct? Tonight's just the night to say we want that on our priorities?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to talk about that at the outset. So this is a little bit awkward. We're going to do a mid-year budget report coming up in two weeks with the city council. And so, you know, councilmember Bertrand, you brought up trying to look at this year's, there's two, there's two issues with community grants that I think we have pending. One is, you know, we didn't fund the community grants this year, and we were going to have a conversation about that. I think councilmember Bertrand and councilmember Peterson, you both brought that up. That, that's the mid-year budget meeting we're having in two weeks. Then this larger conversation of what are we doing about the community grants going forward? We had some work done a couple, a year ago, you know, let's pick that ball up and move forward. That, that is, that's like kind of a fiscal year goal, that we would say, yeah, we want to reinvigorate our subcommittee to work on this, and let's, let's pick that ball up. Does that make sense? And it's a little funny to be doing the goals now for next year before we are closing out this year with the budget, but it's just the way the sequencing has worked out.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Bertrand, questions? Oh, and councilmember, you are muted.
I do it all the time.
I know, I do that, too, obviously. So I think the parklet idea needs to be revisited in one sense. I believe, Mary, maybe...
I believe, Mary, maybe you could comment on this, what's the feedback from the, from the merchants? I mean, it seems to me that it's been very successful the way it's been done right now. So how much effort should we put into trying to create something new that, you know, would actually meet a need, but is it successful enough to really benefit the merchants?
I think you posed a good question, Councilmember Bertrand. There was some, there was a request that, that goes to, that question go to the BIA kind of as a survey, and I don't know when appropriate time would be to discuss that any further, but if you feel that this is a priority during our comments and deliberation, most definitely bring that up.
Okay, I, I think the survey is a great idea. As we know, the 1.9 trillion supposedly, if that's going to be passed, there could be some COVID monies available, and maybe that could help, you know, make our parklets look a little bit nicer, because right now they're sort of haphazard in one sense. The merchants, I can't see them wanting to put a lot of money into something that is temporary, but if it's going to be permanent, that's what I'd like the city to explore, how we could help them, you know, fund something that is a little bit more permanent and looks a lot nicer. Thanks.
All right, and that's perfect, okay.
Yeah, I do have another, yeah, I just have another question.
Okay.
Yeah, so in terms of the partnership with the school district, I'm glad that that's moving forward, is that something that's probable? What, what's the status and how much possibility can we actually depend on this moving forward?
I don't think we can depend on it moving forward. I know that there's a great deal of interest on the school district's part in trying to make something like this work. The issue is, is that they would like to have a soccer field, a regulation soccer field, and I think the city would certainly be improved by having a regulation soccer field. The question is just how, how it could fit. And so that's, that's the real key question. I think if, if there is a way to make a regulation soccer field and a track and a softball field all work out there at Monterey Park, then I think we can have a very real conversation. But, but I don't know the answer to that, I'm not a, I'm not a park designer. And so, that's actually a question that we've talked to the school district about answering, is can we fit these three uses? And if, if we can, I think then there's a lot of interest on the school district's part about, you know, working something out, and it really comes down to your council's interest in, you know, working with the district, which I, I detect as being high, and then secondarily just funding. That, that would be the real challenge, because, you know, new soccer field projects are, are not cheap.
They're not cheap, and soccer is an important aspect for kids these days, big time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? I just have a question for our city manager about how we're going to move forward in the, the next round of conversation. In the packet on page 38 with all of the items with the X's and such, were those all items that, that we set as council priorities, that we walked away with as our priorities? Because in your request, you said pick five tonight, so I'm curious how we are, we're going to proceed with, with this.
So historically, I, I usually ask for council members to narrow it down to five, and in practice, we end up more like with what that, that attached, the attachment to the staff report was, which, which is a lot of different things, and then, you know, the way we concluded that meeting a year ago was council, the council members went through, talked about different things they wanted, we did our best to put checkmarks when we heard multiple things from multiple council members, and then the direction was, we were going to come back with sort of a distilled version of that as best we could in the budget hearings, and we really just ended up in a different place. So to the extent that the council can narrow it, it's very helpful, but we will do our best with whatever you're able to give us this evening.
Great. Then I'll make a suggestion before we move on to, to public comment. Because we didn't really get to go, get very far with the last year's list because of COVID, I don't know if we could bring that up as a starting point, because some of those things that were even mentioned by council tonight are already on there, and perhaps just take off Councilmember Bottorff and exchange it for Councilmember Kaiser, we could go down that list, and then if there's anything left off that wasn't addressed from that list, I, I think that'd be a good starting point, especially because council worked so hard, Vice Mayor Story, and Councilmember Bertrand, and Councilmember Peterson and myself last year on, on that list that we didn't get far in. Would you come up with bringing that list up for us to start off with?
Yeah, so Finance Director Mulberg, Jim was going to be doing our, helping us with that this evening. So Jim, do you have that and the ability to pull that up for us?
Excuse me, yeah, let me share my screen, and then we'll have that list up.
And Jim, I'll give you a second to get that as a working document, and maybe we can move, go to public comment at this time?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody requesting to speak on this item on the Zoom meeting, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council, and I hope that made sense, that we'll start with last year's, because that's what we've worked on, and then if there's anything that anybody would like to add, or we could edit along the way. If I could get a, just a consensus, I don't want to go rogue here with some head nods or something, if everyone's comfortable with that? Yeah, okay. Great. Okay, Jim, want to bring that up?
Apologizing, I have tried twice so far to know.
And we did see it both times, just FYI.
Oh, okay, it's not showing up on my side, that's weird.
And Councilmember Kaiser, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, sorry, so are we, just to clarify, are we looking at this list and are we each picking the five or six that are most important to us? Or, because I feel like there's a few names that just have like a couple X's next to it, so like...
I think the way it works last year is if everyone kind of agreed with it, we all put our names, and then the ones that had the most is how it was prioritized by staff. So you, if the first 15 you love, you can say you, you agree with them, but maybe not everyone else will, but that's how the checks, the check box gets next to your name.
Okay.
And I see...
This is working right now. I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember Bertrand, sorry, I was distracted with Jim's...
No, no, listen. Um, I just had something to maybe make this work a little bit better. I, I think a lot of the lines have already been addressed or on their way to being addressed, and could be like complete, number nine, complete library, jetty flint, you know, these things are on the way.
Yeah.
And permit, permits for the war, these are on the way. So in a sense, this could be shortened quite a bit.
Absolutely, that's what I'm hoping for, and that'll make our city manager list of five more feasible. Jim, if you want to highlight the ones that we, as we go down, if they're actually in, in process, we could just highlight them in a different color, and we don't need to vote on them.
All righty.
But we, when we get there, you don't have to, unless you're that fast. Okay, Jamie, do you want to go with this, and we'll, I'll let you take it from here?
Yeah, I think this is a great tool. I think the one thing, Jim, maybe do you think there's any way we could bump up this Zoom, just hit the plus button there in the lower right once or twice?
How's that?
Great. So, so then the question I think is, is Mayor Brooks, do you want to have, we could take all the little tick marks off at this point, because nobody voted, and then do you want to just go, would you like, would you like to just call on folks and have people go through and identify which ones they'd like to see? And then also recall that there were, I think, the five or six items that I suggested for consideration, and are on, I know.
Right, if, if someone clicked on the jaw, poor Jim's on, on the draw there, but he could type in at the very end as we go with it, those five that you recommended. Okay, so we'll start with, and I'm going to try to extend my page just so I could see everybody with, and I'll just do, I'll just call you out, your name out, and if you just agree, just say agree as we move along, and Jim will mark your name. So the first item is develop options for council consideration to address rising taxpayers' costs. Councilmember Peterson?
Agree.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Agree.
Councilmember Kaiser? Councilman, Vice Mayor Story?
Is this going to be one of my top five?
No.
Okay, then I'm okay with it.
Ditto. I agree. Okay, next one. Evaluate potential tax measures to offset impacts of the malls. Vice Mayor Story?
Now, we sort of did that, didn't we?
Oh, we did that one, didn't we?
Yeah. Did we shelved it maybe for, we may want to consider it again?
Right, exactly.
When we get back into a general election cycle.
Yeah, so Jim, if you want to put 20, was it 24? At the cycle?
Twenty-two.
What year are we in? Twenty-two, okay. Thank you. Next one, continue working with Capitol Mall ownership groups to redevelop the mall. That's just ongoing, so we can skip that one. Work toward Coastal Commission certification of zoning code update, we've done that one. Respond to COVID-19, we've done that one. Complete, great job, staff. Complete funded CIPs. So we'll go, because we have not done that. So Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. Councilmember Story?
Um, fun, oh, yes, of course. But I, I'd like to speak to completed or respond to COVID-19.
Hmm, okay.
If you come back around to it, it's, it's some, and other lines too, so I can wait.
Okay. So he agrees to this one. Councilmember Bertrand?
I agree.
And Councilmember Kaiser?
I have no idea what that is, but you all agree, so I agree.
So the CIP projects are the public worth projects that are in, 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 in process? So the funded CIP projects would be like the road projects that have funding, that we're waiting to get the permits and get out the door?
Yeah, do it.
So before I move on to the next block of, of areas, would anyone like to edit or add comments to line items three to 10? Vice Mayor Story, you had some, maybe some edits or add-ons to some of these, or?
Yeah, I had comments about respond to COVID-19, and there's some, you know, line 16 refers to COVID, and line 26 refers to COVID. But, yeah, I have some comments, kind of now that we're hopefully moving away from COVID, about making the transition out, so.
Would you like to add that item as a priority here before we just skip over it? That would be a...
Well, if, I mean, if it's okay with you, my thinking, now that we have the vaccine, we are, I think, moving to going back to having more open community. And I think this is going to have some budget impact, but we need to, I think, do this in a way that both protects the public, but then opens us up to being able to having community gatherings, council gatherings. I think that there, there's some things about COVID operations that I'm glad to be leaving behind, and I think there's some technology that we've learned to use that could be continually useful for, to increase public participation. And I think it's going to take the city being involved in, kind of noticing and encouraging people now to move back to normal routines, and I think that those are, are going to have budgetary impacts, and so I would like to see some thought put into that, that put on the list.
I think that's something we'll naturally come to, so I could support Sam on that. Oh, no, I'm not.
No, me, sorry. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take that line item, then we'll go across to Councilmember Peterson.
I agree, I agree with this. I'm just, Councilmember Story, if you can clarify, is, how is this a, a budget goal? Are we, are we looking to, to put funding towards programs that would help us transition? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I think that there is going to need some budget funding necessary, and in the sense of, of one, noticing and letting the public know that we're moving back to normal operations, encouraging them to be involved with community government as they used to be, because I don't think these things are just going to happen, and this is going to be a transition. We have to be prepared to, as we're encouraging people to engage with us once again, but though, doing things that where everyone is still safe, because, you know, the herd immunity or the vaccination is not going to happen overnight, and, and I think there's going to be a transition period. And then even when we're moving our, you know, back to normal operations, all the council are in the chambers, the public's coming to the chambers, I think there's some of this technology that we've learned to use, where, you know, people being able to access over, over the webinar, over Zoom, and that we should continue. I assume that that's going to necessitate some technology expenditures to be able to achieve that. So, yeah, and I don't, I don't know to what it, how, I don't think it's a huge budgetary item, but I think some attention and focus and some dollars need to be spent to achieve those goals. And, and again, I, I don't think we should just sit back and wait and see how things roll out, but that we should be on the forefront of that, and, and be leaders in opening up our community once again, and doing it in a safe way though, and assisting the business as well. And so, and I think, and those have been, those are budgetary items, some of those are going to be funded through the CARES Act and so, but that's what I was, that's what I'm thinking, Councilmember Peterson.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah, I, I would support that.
If I could add a little bit, Mayor? The natural thing is, you know, Chloe's our expertise in terms of social engagement, so some of her staff time, you know, is going to have to be paid for, so that's a budget item.
Thank you. So I agree as well, Councilmember Story, this is your item, so I'm only a vice mayor, I assume you agree with this. Councilmember Bertrand?
Oh, no, I already agreed with it.
Oh, you did? And Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, now we're on to line item 13, the next little group being here. Explore grant opportunities for public safety, CIP, and environmental policies and outreach programs.
That's sort of long growing, so definitely agree.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I think this is something we should always be doing as a city, so I'm not sure if it needs to be on any one-year's budget principles. I, I agree with it in concept for sure, but I feel like as, as, as a city, we should always be considering grant opportunities for these things, so I don't know if it needs, if I would want it to be narrowed down to this particular year and then just include it every year.
If I, if I may add, maybe an edit that we explore grant opportunities such as CDBG. I know that we not, we have not always done that because it's time-consuming, and perhaps if we can add that as, explore grant opportunities for public CIP environmental and outreach programs such as CDBG, just because I know our city has not always done that, I don't know if we want to get that specific, but that's, that's where I would like to add that.
Well, we've had a grant person before, so that's, that should be something addressed, I agree.
I mean, I'll, I'll support it, I'll, I'll support it.
Okay. As to I, Vice Mayor Story?
Yeah, we should always be doing those things. Yeah, we should always be doing those things.
Councilmember Betrand?
Yeah, I indicated earlier. I'm supporting.
You're jumping the gun. I, I can't keep up with you. Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes, right.
All right. Uh, create three-year fiscal plan for mall redev- redevelopment impacts. It says in-house?
Oh, boy.
Don't remember. Create three-year fiscal-
This was really around a strategy when we knew that the mall, when we were thinking the mall was gonna be under construction relatively shortly, and that takes out a huge amount of, uh, tax-producing, um, uh, real estate. And so the idea was to try to bridge through the downturn when we knew that there was gonna be a lot of sales tax that was taken out, but then it was gonna be coming back to figure out how we were gonna get from here to there. So that's what this was about. Um, we actually have done a fair amount of this work already. Uh, but at this point, I, it probably would have to be re-updated when, uh, when the time comes.
Okay, so something we would circle back on and top, and not address for this year. Okay, so line item fifteen, support creation and expansion of hotels in appropriate locations. I believe this has just been, uh, it will come if it comes. I think that's kind of where we're at. It's an ongoing effort. Would you agree with that, Jamie?
I mean, you know, thi- this is the council's goals, so, you know.
Okay, because it says support. Okay, so support creation and expansion of hotels in appropriate locations. So, Councilmember Peterson? And this just makes me think about how we've discussed this at the mall and in, and in the village and so forth. I think that's kind of-
Yeah, if this is just the budget principles for the coming year, I'm not sure that that's something that I find to be incredibly pressing, especially since the idea of the mall redevelopment is something that we're probably not gonna see break ground in this coming year. We've asked the, the designers of the mall to come back to us with, um, a plan that includes the hotel. Uh, you know, i- if, if something were to come up in the coming fiscal year that required us to consider it, I certainly wouldn't say, no, let's not consider it. But for the sake of, of really prioritizing our budget goals for the coming year, I'm not sure that I would, I, I wouldn't support this as one of the pressing issues.
Okay, Vice Mayor Story?
I agree, no.
I'm sorry, and I skipped myself. I agree with Council, but, or Councilmembers here. Um, Councilmember Betrand?
I agree.
And Councilmember Kaiser?
Same.
Okay. So, cut unnecessary membership.
What are, what are unnecessary membership? I, I can't remember who brought this one up last year. So I can't remember what was considered an unnecessary membership and if we already did it or not.
Oh, we did it.
We did? Okay, then we're done.
We cut all of our memberships last year. Um, yeah, I think the only memberships we maintained were the ones that we really needed to, like, as a city. I, I don't remember, I think may have been the Councilmember Botsoor item. Um, he, I think he wanted to take a look at some of the memberships that we were, that we had, and then we ended up pulling them all out when COVID hit.
It was actually, uh, Mayor Brooks and Councilmember Peterson that had this one last year.
Oh, it was me?
Yeah.
And I don't even remember what it was? I'm not gonna support that, uh, because I don't remember what it is.
Oh, God, why did you have to call us out, Jim?
I was willing to play that.
I know, thanks, Jamie.
I don't know what last year's Kristen was thinking, but this year's Kristen does not agree.
So, we, um, clearly, we, I do not agree either. Vice Mayor Story?
I think this should be reviewed. There's a lot of the memberships that we probably would want and some that we don't want, so it should be rev- reviewed.
And maybe instead of that being a priority, perhaps staff could just bring it back if there's, I know when we look at our budget for next year in May, or March, whatever, March.
There you go.
There you go, thanks. Hi, uh, Councilmember Kaiser?
Not a priority.
Would you like this to be one of your priorities? Okay. Um, monitor revenue impacts from COVID nineteen quickly. If I may make a suggestion, just to move this to item eleven as like a one, because that kind of makes me think of the same things if Vice Mayor Story's okay with that, and if everyone else is to agree to line item eleven to consolidate, consolidate that one. Um, okay, review village hotel parking permits. So this is kind of what, uh, our city manager was alluding to, but maybe even more extensively in his staff recommendations to look at parking and, um, permits. So if we want to, if, if we want to just edit that with the language that staff suggested, and Jamie, what was that?
Well, so the, so this was something that came up last year, which was looking at the, the village parking permits for the hotels. You know, I, I have had in the back of my mind the fact that we last updated the parking meter rates around ten, eleven years ago. I think it took something like six or seven hearings at the City Council and a Blue Ribbon Mayor's Commission to do it, and probably two years. So I don't know whether or not we want to dive into that parking meter rate discussion. Um, but at some point in the next couple of years, it's probably gonna be a warranted discussion. So, I think you have a couple of choices here. One is, is we could say, hey, look, let's really just focus on the hotel issue, or do we want to look holistically at the village parking? And if we're gonna look holistically at village parking, we just gotta know that it's, it's gonna be a big bite.
So potentially, a question to you, City Manager, um, in terms of revenue, um, my understanding is that the parking permit thing could increase quite a bit of, uh, revenue, depending on how we do it. Now, how would that compare to changing the, uh, the meter rates?
Well, so, um, the meter rates, right now, they're a dollar fifty an hour, and I think that the village meters generate, I want to say about, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, around five hundred thousand dollars a year. So if we increased them by about thirty-three percent, I think that that's probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year revenue increase. Um, I think the, the hotel permits, depending on, you know, right now, we sell those things for like fifty bucks a year, and, you know, maybe they're worth a thousand. So there's maybe thirty or forty thousand dollars a year. So ballpark, there's more money in the meters conceivably if we were to increase the rate to two dollars an hour. I don't know that that's the right thing for a community. Um, I think you'd want to go through some process to, to do some work to, to weigh that out.
Yeah, the other, see, I brought this up. The, the other thing that is concerned me is the equity issue. And, you know, depending on the permit, that could be hogging a meter, you know, for a whole weekend or a week, or whatever the time is that someone's renting a hotel room, which depletes our revenue from the parking meters. So depending on how we actually handle this program, it could free up a lot of parking meters, and that would be to the benefit of the restaurants and other stores in the village.
Vice Mayor Story?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Jamie, I mean, taking out the word hotel, I mean, if we're talking about meters and, and, and not hotel permits, um, if we're gonna be revisiting the parklet, uh, question, wouldn't that necessitate having some, um, foundation or analysis about our parking meters and the rates? And so, don't, wouldn't those things go in tandem?
Oh, I mean, you know, the parklet conversation previously, you'll recall that we did a fair amount of work to figure out how much each space, on average, generated? And you used that as a basis for the rental rate? So if we were to change the parking meter rates, obviously, then the parklet rate, if they're still tied, could change as well. Um, yeah, you know, I, I think, I think doing an evaluation of the village parking rates, it, it would be a, would be a goal. It, it just, everyone needs to know that that's, it's gonna be a tough one, and, and probably we would, you know, start with kind of a council hearing that briefed you on the different parking permit programs and what they cost in the village, and, and then we would build up incrementally from there and figure out where we want to go. Um.
Well, I, I'd like to do that as, you know, as part and parcel of revisiting the parklet concept. Because I, I have an anticipation that it's, uh, it's gonna be much, uh, larger than what we were considering before.
Right. But, and those two, those two conversations, uh, talking about parklets and parking meter rates in the village, like that, that, uh, I probably don't need to tell you, Councilmember Story, that's a big bite for the next year. You know, that would be a real thing for us to work on.
Yeah, the Blue Ribbon and everything that came after that was over a period of three or four years?
Yeah, right, but I, I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to dive to the question about the parklet, as you mentioned before, um, and, because I, I think it's already starting to come up. Um, and, um, so I just think we're gonna be compelled to look at it, and, and it seems to me that it, it, um, would be in conjunction with what our otherwise rates are. Because there are gonna be economic questions about, you know, do we charge for the implosion on the streets? How much do we charge? How much will we lose? Is there a way to make that up, um, with, uh, other meter rates, other parking fees? And so, I just see that as all one big que- economic question. And yeah, I mean, if we could avoid it, yeah, I probably would prefer that, but I don't think we, we're gonna be able to do that, honestly, Jamie, so. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, the cat's out of the bag. That's the deal. We have to deal with it somehow.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, Jim, if you could write it up, um, on item eighteen, review parklets in village in, with, um, including the parking permit as Vice Mayor Story suggested. Um, it sounds like that would be, that's the priority of his. Um, and then maybe in parentheses, just note that in May, we have to, that's when the parklet clause ends anyhow, so when we get to that, um, after council comments here. I saw Councilmember Peterson's hand raised next.
I think, you know, I think I'm unfortunately in, in, in the opposite side of the spectrum of, of where Vice Mayor Story is looking at this. I think we will have to look at, at village parking program, hotel parking permits, and parklets in the village, but I think we, in this coming year, need to separate them because we're still in a pandemic right now. We're probably not gonna be in recovery mode until well after summer, so, you know, even if we make it a priority to review parklets and decide whether or not we want those to be permanent, I think that's one of the things we really need to focus on this year as, as businesses recover and as we determine what the, the next normal is gonna look like, so to speak. Um, and then maybe in the following year, when, when things get back to a, a, you know, we're, we're into our next normal, we've decided if parklets are gonna stay or not, then we can look at the parking program and the hotel parking permits. So I, I am of the, of the opinion that, um, yes, as, as Vice Mayor Story said, we can't avoid looking at any of these issues, but I definitely think we should separate them, make parklets in the village and outdoor dining a priority this year, and then make the parking program and the hotel parking permits a priority next year.
And, uh, Councilmember Peterson, so as Jim types this up as a separate line item, would you like the hotel parking permits and the metered parking to be separate or as one?
No, I think that's fine to have those as one. I think that the hotel parking permits and the parking meters together are something we should, we should consider in the next fiscal year. Um, but the parklets in the village are something we should consider in this fiscal year on, on their own. Um, because they're all important issues, but in, in viewing everything from a lens of pandemic and coming out of twenty twenty and what the next, you know, what twenty-two, twenty-two is gonna look like, um, I, I'm really kind of hyper-focused on just getting us through the pandemic and kind of to a new normal, or next normal, or whatever you want to call it, um, before we start trying to overhaul all of the things that we were considering before the pandemic even hit. So that's just my, uh, my perspective on, on that.
Okay, and then Jim, if you could do one more line item for the outdoor dining parklet, um, as an extra, as a different line item, because those are all separate. Um, thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Kaiser?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think I'm confused. Is this time for questions or is this, um, comment?
Feel free, if you have some questions or for, for clarity.
Um, no questions, I just have a lot of comments, so I can wait.
Sure, if we're prepared to go item by item, if it's, if it's about these, um, or if you'd like to expand on any of these, is that what you're thinking? I just wanna-
Um, well, I think kind of how, obviously how, uh, Vice Mayor Story was saying, the, the, the whole parklet situation along with the, um, parking fee situation will and, and definitely go hand in hand. I agree that I feel like focusing more on the comeback of this pandemic is, is sort of where I want to be, and that's more important to me than, um, increasing the parking fees, because if we do so, then that's gonna increase the cost for the small business in order to keep a parklet as a more permanent option. Um, I want to look at the parklets as more of a sustainable and feasible thing rather than maybe sort of bouncing back on what you guys proposed a few years ago, um, and actually looking at what could happen for the small businesses and what type of sales tax that would actually inevitably be bringing in along with the parking fees. Maybe not necessarily looking at how to increase the parking within the village, but within the larger lots behind the police station and City Hall. Those are quite affordable, and I feel like those are areas where maybe we could increase the cost. Um, downtown Santa Cruz, it's a dollar an hour to park. Downtown Capitola is a dollar fifty, but our back lots are fifty cents an hour. So I think there's some wiggle room there that, um, we could certainly look at as far as more revenue, um, and really creating a, a more feasible option for the small businesses to maintain their outdoor dining, um, ones that haven't had the option before, or before it was just too expensive. Um, I am a huge advocate for that, obviously.
I appreciate that feedback. No, it sounds like this is gonna be a priority of yours then. So let me go ahead and go across the board while Jim finishes his edits. I didn't know, is, is it parlets? And have I been saying it wrong this whole time? No? Okay. Um, item seventeen, review village hotel parking permits and village parking program as a standalone. I'll just go across. Councilmember Peterson?
Um, no.
Okay, um, I will say no as well. Council, Vice Mayor Story?
As a standalone, no.
Okay, Councilmember Betrand?
Same.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, and then, you, do you mean no?
I mean no.
Uh, okay, item eight, uh, eighteen, review parklet, uh, parkets in village outdoor dining current program and three thirty-one. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Vice Mayor Story?
Yes.
Councilmember Betrand, Councilmember Kaiser, this is, this is you. Yes. Okay, I feel like we edited Vice Mayor's stories, so just for, um, for, for future context, Jim, there was a line item that both of them were combined for Vice Mayor's story, and I just want to make sure you leave it up there that it was the parklets and the parking together as one, as a priority, and I just don't want to minimize that that was what he suggested earlier. Um, okay, and so we'll go across the board as you finish typing that up. So, Councilmember Peterson?
Wait, are we on the parklet in village, or are we going to the alcohol?
Okay, I'll let Jim finish that one. We'll go to the alcohol, and then we'll go back to Vice Mayor's stories. Um, work with SOCal to allow alcohol at the community center.
Yeah, Mayor, private comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Betrand?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I put that on last year, and, you know, I think, as you know, um, we haven't been able to, uh, generate a lot of money out of the community center. Before, we used to be able to do alcohol, which allowed for weddings and a whole variety of other things. It, it is a fraught issue with the school district, but if we did support this, we now have better relations with the school district, we might be able to come to some agreement. So that's why I put that there. Basically, to help generate money to support the community center, so we get some improvements in there, HVAC and a bunch of other things.
Okay. Um, if you recall, Councilmember, as mayor, you get to sit in the, with the superintendent, and I won't make this a priority of mine, but I would be more than happy to ask the question during the, that Breakfast Club meeting with the superintendent and the Vice Mayor. Um, it, I would be more than happy to do that, just to let you know.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. This is a long-term discussion, it won't happen overnight.
Okay, so we'll go across the board just for sake of continuity. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I agree, this is something we should look at at some point, but not this year.
Okay, um, no- Okay, um, no for me. Vice Mayor Story?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
I'll say yes, so that it keeps coming up in conversation, as you said, in the Breakfast Club.
Okay, Councilmember Kaiser?
No for me.
Okay, and then we'll go back to item twenty, review parklet and Village Parking Program together, Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Um, no for me. Vice Mayor Story?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes, um, but I think the emphasis should be on going for it in the future years. But yes, anyway.
Okay, Councilmember Kaiser?
How is this any different than the last one? Sorry, that we voted on for?
Yeah, the last one, we're not gonna be doing parking permits, it would just be parklets.
Okay.
So would you like to do both or what, or what?
I, yeah, I think we should explore both.
Okay, so that's a yes for Councilmember Kaiser. I keep scrolling if I'm going through the Excel sheet with my, my mouse here, it's kinda funny. Um, thank you, Jim. Okay.
I'm sorry, can you just, can I have some clarification? So, so the Village Parking Program as a whole got no votes to review, but we did get three votes. And then everyone wants to look at the parklet, and then it looks like it's three to two to do parklets and Village Parking together.
Yeah, you got the majority, yeah, you got the majority on looking at them both together. Uh, so that's Vice Mayor's story's suggestion. You got the majority.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna, so it looks like the council, so that, that's the direction is we'll sort of bundle a parklet and Village Parking Permit Program conversation, um, for, 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 for next year.
Yeah. Um, okay.
Here, I'll have to be excused. I'll be back. Yeah, I need a break. I need a break.
Okay, we lost a council member for a stretch. Um, I'm gonna give Jim, Jim a second. We'll go ahead and break for two minutes, okay? Come, uh, we'll return in two.
Hi. No, I'm sorry, we're just taking a two-minute break. I, they mentioned it, I didn't know if you had heard. They should be resuming shortly. Thank you.
We need some quality home music.
That's a great idea.
All right, folks. We're gonna get started. We're almost there. Longest meeting of the year. We're only gonna do this once. I appreciate everyone's hard work. Do we have everyone back? One, two, three, four, five, perfect. Okay, Jim, let's rock and roll here. Item twenty-two, go above and beyond keeping residents informed and ensure all members made aware of projects that affect them. As a priority, as a budget priority, Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, the, you know, I, this is another one of the items that I feel like are important and they're always important. I just don't see how that's a budget priority in the next year. And I understand that staff time and outreach, et cetera, but I just don't see it as a budget priority for the coming year, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay, no for me. Council, uh, Vice Mayor Story?
Uh.
Councilmember Bertrand? You're muted. He says yes, I think that was a thumbs up, oh, here we are.
Yeah, it's a yes. To me, it's an ongoing thing. It's not a solid thing, though.
Okay, Councilmember Kaiser?
Not a priority, thank you.
Okay, make available free feminine hygiene products for all public restaurants. Councilmember Kaiser. I mean Peterson, excuse me.
Did we end up doing that?
No. We did? Well, I have no idea.
Um, excuse me, not in the public, they're in City Hall and in the police station.
Oh.
Okay, so we're thinking also like at, uh, Jade Street and the beach and stuff? Okay, um, then yeah, then yeah, I support that.
Yes for me. Vice Mayor Story?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Super down.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, twenty-four, collaborate with local partners to update one local place structure to universal design for children of all abilities. Councilmember Peterson?
This is another one that I think is really important, but I'm not sure that this year is the year that we would be focusing on, um, you know, putting, putting funding towards a new place structure when we're barely getting ourselves off the ground with our budget. So I would like it to stay on the list, um, for consideration in 2022, but I'm gonna say no for this coming fiscal year.
Okay, and I will say no to this one. Um, council, it's, I can't see the names anymore, Jim, so it's Vice Mayor Story, right? Okay, I'll get it done. Vice Mayor Story?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
No, I agree with Kristen.
Councilmember Kaiser?
No.
Okay, ex, uh, I think that says, expand emergency response planning and pursue grants for City Hall generator.
Did that happen?
Yeah, we got a generator, didn't we?
I don't know. We submitted a grant, we were unsuccessful, we submitted another grant, which is actually not for a generator system, but it's for a TV and storage system, and I don't believe we've heard back on that grant.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson?
Okay, in that case, uh, yeah, I think that would be a priority. A generator's pretty important in case of emergency.
I would say, um, I, I would just tap that into the grant that we approved, um, earlier on. So I'm gonna say no to this in, um, that because we have the other grant section on there.
In that case, can we, can we move this? Well, I guess it depends on what everyone else says, but if we can all agree, I think that's a really good point, Mayor Brooks, that maybe we should just move that back into the other grant item and, and not make it one of its own.
Consolidate.
Yeah. Can I just, yeah, is, um, can I get a thumbs up if everyone just agrees with the consolidation and that staff will continue with their attempts to get a grant for generators? I see everyone accepts council, we've already all said yes to grants, Vice Mayor Story? I think we already have a grant, yeah.
Right, um, I, I think the need for City Hall to have a generator, um, is, should not be dependent upon whether or not we get grants. Which, I mean, that's kinda saying if we never get a grant, we're never gonna do it. Um, I think it should be a priority, independent of whether we have a grant or not.
How much do generators cost?
I think they were like hundreds of thousands of dollars, is what I recall. Um, like about three hundred thousand bucks.
Yeah, we need a grant.
Okay, so let's leave it as a, Jim, I'm sorry, I see you cutting and pacing. Let's leave it as a separate line item, and we'll go across the board one more time. Councilmember Peterson?
My apologies, we're back on the, which one? The generator now?
Yeah, we're just gonna leave it as separate.
Um, there is for Jenny, Cindy Hall's generator. Okay, then yeah, then yeah, I'll support it as its own thing, that's fine.
As do I, Vice Mayor Story?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay. Now we are on to have city council create and set priorities for community grants. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Yes for me. Vice Mayor Story?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, I, if everyone's in agreement, seek opportunities to help people stay connected during COVID nineteen. Um, I feel like that we're doing that already. So unless someone feels otherwise, we can skip through that one.
Consolidate, maybe.
Okay. Twenty-seven, establish plan for children's fund considering parks and rec strategic plan and something else. Uh, and needs for scholarships. Establish plan for children, uh, children's fund considering parks and rec strategic plan and needs for scholarships. So we completed the strategic plan, so I think that one's complete. Line item thirty-one, staff develop a list of projects associated with the mall redevelopment. I think that has been complete or is ongoing. Um, and just stop me, folks, if you disagree or want to vet this out. Evaluate traffic flow at Cliff and Wharf possible roundabout. So this is a roundabout for Cliff and Wharf. Um, so that's like past Shadow Brook, is that Cliff and Wharf, right? Like down there, that round, at Dead End? And it's like, I remember talking about that last year. Okay, so Councilmember Peterson, would you like this to be?
Uh, no, not for the coming year, no.
Uh, neither do I. Vice Mayor Story?
No.
Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Kaiser?
No.
Okay, sidewalks on Kennedy and McGregor. So that's, uh, um, at the end of, so New Brighton Middle School towards New Brighton Beach, there are no sidewalks as you walk towards New Brighton Beach. Right? That's Kennedy and McGregor, is what I'm thinking. It's a very expensive project, as I recall, the city manager telling us about last year.
A recommendation, I think you can punt on these CIP projects, and when we get in the budget, we'll be talking about how much money we might have. And at that point, then you can make a determination, unless you have specific projects that you'd like us to do more research about and then bring information at the budget time.
Well, then I'll prompt everyone and say this is a yes for me. Councilmember Peterson?
Um, I, I would say it's, uh, it, this is tough, cause I can't say that yes makes this a budget priority. I would say this is a priority for us to discuss in our actual budget discussions when we're looking at our CIP budget. So I, maybe.
All right, I don't, I'll, maybe we'll take everyone off the hook on this one, and can we, we save it for our actual budget hearing, um, when we figure out how much money. Um, Rispin Park, the conceptual review was just completed, so I think we're just waiting to hear back from the grant on that. So I won't say it's completed, but we can move forward from that. Declares complete street projects, that was a priority, and I know there's CIP projects in place, so we'll discuss that during our budget hearing at the next one. Um, seek grant with school district regarding the soccer field. So this is staff, one of staff's recommendations this evening. Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, seek grant, yeah, sure, yeah.
Probably not quite seeking a grant yet, it's really figuring out if there's a partnership possibility.
So then is it a budget priority or is it just something that is happening?
I mean, I think thi- this is actually would be a helpful one to get feedback in. If council thinks this is a good thing to work on, then I think we can focus on it. We have a Breakfast Club meeting, meeting with school district that can talk about it. If council feels like this is kind of a bit of a hornet's nest, um, because, you know, the Monterey Park area can sometimes, um, there's a lot of, there can be a lot of just community feedback and different perspectives, um, then we could, we could focus our efforts somewhere else.
Okay, well, we can get community feedback and, and different input, I guess. In that case, sure, yeah.
And, yeah, and I guess I would just offer that I, I like the idea. I think it's great for us to look further into this. As I find, as financially putting any money into it, I, I wouldn't agree with any of that right now. Um, so if you wanna, if, if the rest of everyone's okay with just adding that as a caveat, that this is just to start the conversations and to look further into this opportunity, not necessarily funding it, then I am a yes for this. Um, Vice Mayor Story?
Uh, the partnership with the school district regarding the soccer field?
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, we, we've had some discussions with them already about some initial steps in that direction. Seems to me it was about more than just the soccer field, though. Um, um, and, um, so, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with continuing the discussions with the school district.
Great, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, no, I think this idea is gonna, you know, come to fruition eventually, but we need to keep it going, we need the discussion going. And, you know, like Jamie said, he wants us to sort of give him direction to, you know, he's talking with Scott, so, you know, that's part of the whole scenario, besides the Breakfast Club.
Right, right. Councilmember Kaiser?
Yes, I think, um, keep the conversation going for sure. Um, as far as a priority, it's probably not like top-notch on my list.
Okay.
And, uh, Mayor?
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to raise my hand. Um, yeah, I wanted to put something in there, um, just to get some cost estimates so when we talk about CIP, and, um, that would be...
I was gonna go around, um,
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I know everyone has some other things to add. I just wanna make sure we covered all of the staff ones that were presented in the pocket, um, in our pocket. Jamie, did we get all of those? There was a stalker, it was parklet, it was a few other things, and I just wanna make sure we get to those first.
The Scott Valley Partnership, that is, that's quite an interesting question about whether or not, um, whether or not that might be something we would consider pursuing. I think the advantages to our community and the city of doing that is, is we could spread out some of the fixed administrative costs. Um, if we entered a partnership with Scott Valley, um, potentially also does, you know, the, one of the things I will often say is the magic isn't in the five thousand can of trash that you pick up, it's in the first. So, to some degree, we develop programs. If we, if we have partnerships with Scott Valley, we just have more experience and, you know, it's like, once you do one food truck event, the second one is easier, and so it's easy to kind of bring those experiences back and forth. The downside is, is that this would be, um, you know, we'd be relying on, on a recreation, um, a recreation, um, manager to, to manage this. And, you know, there's only, we only have one Nikki Bryant, and so it would mean, um, you know, sharing some of those resources. So Scott Valley is interested in exploring this partnership. Um, they haven't committed to it by any stretch of the imagination, but, but the question is, is does the city, does the city council see the value? Um, they haven't committed to it by any stretch of the imagination, but, but the question is, is does the city, does the city council see the value in exploring their partnership?
Okay, Councilmember Peterson, you have a question? Oh, you're muted.
I see value in it, is, um, yeah, I, I'm interested in hearing if our, um, if Nikki feels that we have the bandwidth to handle it, and if so, then I'm, I'm for it.
Is Nikki on?
Yes, hello, sorry, I, uh, good evening, Mayor, council members. I am catching up a little bit, because I, um, was popping in and out when this conversation started. So, um, forgive me if I repeat anything.
Yeah, we just started, we just, the question was, if it's within your bandwidth to possibly partner with Scott Valley and with, and offer our services and programs with them?
Um, yes, I, I think particularly, um, i- in regards to a first phase, um, I do feel that it is within our bandwidth. Um, it is something that I would need to really deeply explore and come up with some strategies within for staffing as to how we would best manage it and identify what exactly we would need. Um, but I, it, it, I feel like it is a, a reasonable challenge. As, it would, it would be a challenge as of that, anything that would be starting of a new program would be. Um, however, I feel that particularly in this first phase, um, I am, I am confident that we would be able to support Scott Valley with this contract.
All right. I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson, did you have another question?
No, I was just gonna say thank you, and, and in that case, I would, I would support this.
And, and I just want, I see your hand raised, Councilmember Kaiser. I just want to a, a, ask for some clarification for Nikki. You said, um, that you would feel comfortable moving on with that contract. I know you and I've had discussions about what the, the contractors you're speaking of, but can you please, um, share with the rest of the council what contractors you're talking about?
Um, so, I, I believe that it was mentioned at the beginning a little bit, and again, forgive me if I'm repeating, um, details, but, uh, in regards to Scott Valley Recreation, um, Division, they are, they're looking to be able to provide, um, summer programs for their community and have reached out to us, um, in order to see if that's something that we would, that, that we would be interested in partnering for. And so in this, in this first phase, we've been specifically talking about, um, just providing a summer program, and that if there's any other further conversation, we would have that discussion later.
Thank you, should we add an edit then to this partnership with Scott Valley regarding recreation programs? If for the summer program, or are we asking a more general question, Jamie, of, um, a partnership for long-term, for the whole year?
So why, you know, this is, this is a good conversation, and, and the conversation that I had with, with City Manager of Scott Valley when initially came up was that, um, I thought that Capitola potentially could get into a relationship and we could try to work on something maybe for the summer. Uh, but really, the, the way I characterize it is, is potentially, it was sort of like putting the toe in the water for a potential longer-term partnership? Like, if this is just like them looking for someone to come run summer camp this summer, and that's it, like, I, 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 I don't know that that's really that compelling for the city. If this is about kind of maybe starting to explore a longer-term partnership about recreation, not making the commitment now, I think that that is, that, that could be more compelling for the city. So, at this point, I would keep it this way, and the first step in this would be, let's take a look at a summer contract and see how that starts to work out. But, but if nobody ever wants to do anything beyond that, then I think we would want to kind of reevaluate and say, does it really make sense to just, us just do that? Does that make sense?
Councilmember Kaiser, do you have a question?
Thanks, yeah, that was kind of where I was going with it, was, is there a way to sort of explore this in almost like a more like a temporary way? Or like wherever, so that Nikki can get her bearings and actually like either get staffing, or an assistant, or whatever she's gonna need for that work? Um, I see in the future that it could be really cool. I, I, yeah, I think my approach would be like, start small, and then see where it goes, and like, if we're actually getting benefits from it, um, and vice versa for them too, but obviously they weren't working with us, but, yeah, thanks.
Great, so I see yes for Councilmember Peterson. I'll just share that I have some reservations about a long-term partnership. I feel like our Parks and Rec Department has just completed their strategic plan. We're just kicking off with our own programming, possible expansion of our own program. And although Nikki, you know, I think you're fantastic and more than able to, to expand, I have some concerns about, um, expanding too much before we really focus and, um, focus on our families and our kiddos here locally. So, um, I, I support the summer contract, and I'm guessing that'll come to us as an individual item. Um, but as a whole, uh, annual, uh, partnership with Scott Valley for a whole year of partnership and services as our goal, um, I, I wouldn't commit to all that right now. So I hope I'm clear in that no is for this long-term, but I do support the contract and see where it goes. So it's not one of my priorities. Um, Vice Mayor Story.
Yes, at the discretion of the city manager.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Yes, to our short-term goal, if that's kind of what we're going on.
Okay, and then I, there was an administrative policies update as a recommendation for, um, by staff. Councilmember Peterson, would you like this to be one of your priorities, that we reevaluate and update our administrative policies this year?
I'm, I'm, again, is, is this, is there a budget ask behind this?
It's staff time, I think that's why it was on there, right, Jamie?
Council, council agenda time and staff time.
Oh, okay, um, yeah.
That's a yes for me, Vice Mayor Story.
Um, no, I don't think I have enough background about the need for this, um, to, um, pump up, so I'll take a pass.
Okay, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with this, it's always good to review policies, um, they often need to be updated. You know, you shouldn't ignore situations before, and I think they apply to now, so I definitely agree with this.
Okay, and Councilmember Kaiser.
I agree.
Great. All right, I think that covers the staff, um, unless there's anything, Jamie, before, before we move on to councilmembers' individual. Okay, so, Councilmember Peterson, do you have a question, or do you want to?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you can, if, I'm, I'm still confused on the parklet one, I'm wondering if we can go back, just so that I can clarify. I just, I'm not sure that I understand if, if one item gets unanimous and the other one just gets majority, but one of them includes what the other one was, I'm just, I'm not sure that I entirely understand. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if staff can clarify, or if, I don't wanna drag this on any longer than it already is, it's, we're, it's pretty late, but I'm just, I'm a little bit confused by, um, the parklets in the village alone getting a unanimous vote for it being addressed alone, but then the parklet and village parking getting a majority, which would also make it kind of what we focus on. So I'm kind of confused on which one of these we're gonna focus on in the coming year.
If I may take a stab at it, the way I read it is that both, so we're gonna be reviewing the park, the parklets and parking program. That's how I see it, add a priority for this year.
Well, then doesn't that negate the need for there to be the parklets in the village standalone?
I think it was, um, we added that as a standalone item, uh, because that's how Vice Mayor Story presented it, presented it. He wasn't interested in, or excuse me, uh, he wanted them together because they go hand in hand.
Okay.
Are, if, are we comfortable with that, Jamie, do you wanna offer anything, but I see hands raised from council.
But I, I, I do think, though, that, that having both of these doesn't make a ton of sense. We're either gonna be doing parklets and parking programs together, as Councilmember Story explained, that they're, you know, that they're tied in together, and we're gonna have a comprehensive conversation about both of them together. Or we're gonna do line eighteen, which is just talk about the parklets and figure out what we wanna do. Um, but I think, I, I, I sort of can't read them both and do both.
My, my thought was, um, if you'll mind, was to, um, after this meeting, and before we get to any budget hearings, was to kind of clean it up and consolidate and put the priorities up to the top, and the ones that we're gonna punt out till next year or future years down at the bottom, and bring it back during the budget hearings. So on my, on these, I was gonna combine them.
Okay, and I'm more than happy if we'd like to just add to item twenty-one a recap, and if we want to do a, a vote, a check-through, again, just to check in, to make sure everyone's on the same page, if that would, uh, help Councilmember Peterson?
You mean at a future meeting?
No, 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 like right now, like, we could just say, we can go over it, because I, I see your point that it, it's either, we would be doing one or the other, or both, right?
Mary.
Uh, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, let me, um, you know, I think, um, Councilmember, uh, Kaiser sort of said it best, and maybe she can reiterate. But the, the parklet program, it would be, I think, as she said, so disruptive if we, you know, just sort of took it out right now. There's so much riding on it for the merchants. And I think Story is saying that, especially if we're gonna make a permanent policy, we really have to look at how everything works together. So in the long term, this is the way I look at it, I agree with Sam Story, but I also agree with Councilmember Kaiser that, you know, we, we can't wait for the whole thing to be analyzed and worked on before we make a decision. The parklet program right now is so critical, let's continue it, since we have this deadline on the thirty-first of May, until the coronavirus pandemic is over, and then during that period of time, we start working on moving forward with the overall program.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks, yeah, um, I, I think I need to clarify, um, thank you, Jacques, um, that's totally what I was going for, is sort of creating a program for the parklets to be more accessible to the small business. Um, I do not personally think that we need to look at the meter rates within the village, but I, if we are looking for more revenue to bounce back from what we've missed out on, from parklets, things like that, I think we need to revisit the meter program, or, sorry, the pay-by-space of the backlots behind the police station and City Hall as a way to offset, um, if, if the parklets are going to greatly impact, um, our, our income, and along with making it feasible for the small business. Um, so I don't know if that needs to be a separate line, like lots versus the, the village parking, but that's sort of what I was getting at when I voted for like the combo of the two, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Peterson.
Okay, can I, if, if it's, um, if it's agreeable for, for Councilmember Story and others, can I make the recommendation that we make it a priority to review parklets in the village this year? And afterwards, um, given time and bandwidth and based on where we are in a pandemic, then review, uh, village parking and/or parking lot parking. I'm not opposed to reviewing those things at another time in the year, but I don't wanna review that. I don't want us to consider if we should keep parklets based on how we're gonna handle parking revenue. So I, I, I don't have a problem with reviewing them separately, but I don't want them bundled together. So I'm, I'm wondering if there could be, um, a compromise, that we will review the parklets in the village and outdoor dining independently of, and first, before reviewing, uh, village parking program and hotel parking and, and parking lot parking. Does that make sense?
So maybe prioritize, eighteen is now, and nineteen is subsequent to now.
Yes, and if it happens in this fiscal year, so be it, but it would, it would need to be subsequent, subsequent to eighteen.
Yeah, I, I think the main point is that we have a COVID situation, our downtown and our merchants and all the businesses that are there depends on us meeting their needs at this point, and so that's a priority. And not worry about the whole fiscal thing of the parking meters and stuff like that until we actually have the time.
Okay, I think we have a consensus, Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to share, and for myself, I don't know how I would make a decision about parklets and granting them or denying them without knowing how much money it costs the city, um, and whether there are ways for us to mitigate that expense. That's all I'm saying, and one way you look at it is looking at our parking revenue. Um, and, I mean, it says the village parking, but I think that includes the, the lot, lower and upper, the beach parking, and I think, I don't know, just in my mind, you can't do these things independently, unless, I mean, because there's gonna be a great demand for parkland, that's just my anticipation. And all the ones on the Esalenod, um, um, the ones, um, the one on Capitola Avenue, uh, the ones on San Jose, and Jamie, you can correct me if I'm not remembering this correctly, but I think those, those were significant amount of revenue that we lost, and we would be a permanent, um, uh, reduction in our revenue. Now, I don't know that that's a bad thing, um, overall, but I don't know how you evaluate parklets without analyzing the word "park." That's just my point of view, and so, and that's the way I would approach it. Um, and I'm, and regardless of what happens tonight, I'm still gonna look at it in that fashion.
Madam Mayor, can I address Sam Story's, um, point?
Sure, I just wanna make sure before you do, Councilmember, that we have the item listed correctly, Vice Mayor Story, uh, um, correctly, as you are stating it. And I think that's line item, I, I see post-COVID, I know you didn't say that, but, um, line item nineteen. So review parklet and village parking program together was your item, correct?
Um, well, if, if village is, if we all agree that it includes the lower and upper, um, beach parking lots, um, and I'm not, yeah, program, I don't, you know, to me.
Yeah, so.
It's the parking meters, I, I don't know why, you know, the program, but, you know, it, it's just a lot of that semantics.
So Jim, what I'm hearing is review parklet and parking, and nothing else from Vice Mayor Story?
Well, yeah, that would, that would be fine, and parking.
Yeah.
If you wanted to add parking rates. Um, so, just, I, I don't know if this helps at all, but, um, when I'm, I'm referring to parking program, I'm, I'm thinking of the meters in the village, Cliff Drive, both, uh, the packed Cove lots, all of the different permits that we issue, surf and coffee, neighborhood permit, just, just taking me a look at everything we do, which we charge for parking.
Okay, so I think we, we hear Vice Mayor Story, um, and I'm hearing Councilmember Peterson be pretty clear that now is not the time to review parking or parking increases at this time, but it's understandable that there will have to be some sort of analysis when we get into the parklet, that, of the parking meters and the effect on that, and that's just gonna come to a nat- natural fruition when we evaluate the parklet. So I, I, um.
But I also wanna, I'm sorry, Mayor Brooks, to interrupt, but I also wanna clarify that my, my suggestion of reviewing the parklets in the village is not just related to COVID-19 response, that I think we should review them, um, that, that this isn't just, let's review them based on the fact that we're still in a pandemic, that I, I thought we should have a consideration of them, um, in light of, or, in consideration of the fact that we're in a pandemic. in light of, or in consideration of the fact that we're in a pandemic and going to be moving out of it, but not just, do we want to keep them going during the pandemic? That wasn't necessarily, and I apologize, I know this is getting kind of complicated, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
And I agree, that wasn't either what I was approving either. We're talking about long-term parklets that include funding and have to look nice and could be possibly forever. Okay. So, I'm going to review, we're going to start with line item 17, review village hotel parking permits and village parking program. So this is just if we're going to be reviewing the parking program, the cost, if we would possibly increase it over time, et cetera, et cetera, and use staff time to look further into that, to our parking program. So the village parking, the lots, upper and lower lots, if this wants to be, we want to use staff time and make this a priority for this year. So that's line item 17, all parking programs, and there was nobody interested in that. Has anything changed? Okay.
That stays on the list.
Then, Councilmember Kaiser, did you want to change your opinion on item seven, line 17?
Sorry, yeah, and I, I do feel like maybe I'm just like spinning the wheel. I'm not, maybe I'm not explaining or getting to the point correctly. If, if looking into the parklet program gets overlooked because we are losing revenue on parking, then I would like to look at the Pat Cove lots as, as gaining more money for us, not necessarily the village parking, so that that doesn't affect the small businesses. So I don't, I don't know, like, sure, like, I think what Sam is saying, we're, eventually it's all going to coincide, and I don't know if there's any getting away with not looking at one thing and looking at the other. And if it means compartmentalizing each space and like where we're looking at gaining revenue from, if that's what it takes, that's what I'm looking forward to, to make it sustainable for, for us and for the small business. And maybe that's just in a grander scheme thing and that's totally fine, but I just, I think everything will have to be looked at.
Okay, and I see that's why you voted yes for item nine, line 19, because, okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I've got two things. One, and maybe it's a point of order, has this gone to public comment yet? I can't remember.
We did go to public comment before we, we started going through this, yeah.
Okay, in that case, I think, and, and I understand that it's hard to, to separate these, these things when we're talking about budget priorities and where we want to spend our money, but because we're all kind of spinning our wheels here and it's getting late, I would make a motion that we approve our budget principles and goals except for line items 17 through 19, and that those come back to us as a separate agenda item for discussion on their own.
I'll second that with the proviso that Jim gives us some sort of readout of how he sees it in terms of finance in general.
All right, so we have a first and a second.
I, I don't know if Kristin agreed with me. I, I think Jim has a large role to play here in helping us understand, so that's what I was trying to inject.
In a future, that's what I mean, in a future item. I think in a future item, it should come back to us as, as its own agenda item, saying, here's the issue with the parklet, here's the issue with village parking, here's the issue with lot parking, and we can decide at that time which one of those three items, if not all of them, we want to address.
Okay, I totally agree with that.
We have a first and a second, so I'm just checking with Samantha. Hold on, I just, I just want to finish this motion that's on the table and I want to confirm with Samantha that we can do a roll call for this item and then move forward with the rest of the budget principles.
I, I have a matter of order because the parklet program ends on the 31st, 21. What happens if, yeah. So, you know, this item better come back before then, so we have some chance to move forward or we're going to have to continue the program. That's my point. Yeah, if you want to answer now, yes, staff, if, if, working on the parklets and figuring out the future, we will be working on that in the near term. I mean, that's going to be a big project for us to work on. And so, yes, no, we won't just have everybody take the tables out and not have a plan or a process in place to, to consider the future. Okay, I just want to confirm that. I do want to support what Kristin said as a second, so with that confirmation, I definitely support it.
Madam Mayor, could you please repeat your question?
Sure, we had a, an additional motion to, to add an agenda item. So I had, there was a suggestion on the table to add an agenda item at this time to the new item, and there was a first and a second. Do I just jump into roll call? It's a substitute motion in addition to what we have going on here?
No, 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 that wasn't, that wasn't a substitute motion. That was part of my original motion. My original motion was to accept our budget principles and goals with the exception of items 17 through 19, that they be removed from our budget principles discussion altogether and come back to us as its own agenda item. So that's, that's just one motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So there's a first and a second on the table. Before we go to roll call, is there any other items or any other questions before we go to roll call? I do, I'd like to add some additional items to the budget principles, so before we do, I feel like we haven't, I did not get to add my items to the list. But if I'm going to, at the sake of time and continuation, it sounds like there's a motion, a second, Samantha, can, do I have to take it? Or do we, can I continue to add my items?
You could make a substitute motion, or you could add your items and see if Councilmember Peterson would accept a friendly amendment.
Okay, so Councilmember Peterson, I just have two things to add to this list to see if I would get council agreement on them. Would you be open to that substitute motion?
I think the substitute motion would have to be the addition of the items that you are about to put forward. So, so if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, Samantha, but I believe that I have a motion and a second, so it's still open for discussion, so you could offer up for discussion additional items to this budget document and then ask for an amendment to my motion to add those items into the approval that I've asked for. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've, and I don't want to skip over anybody else. I don't think that's fair. Usually the mayor speaks last, so there's still, it's council comments. Are there any other council members who wanted to add things to the budget principles and goals? I see Vice Mayor Story hand raised.
I did too.
And Councilmember Bertrand, and as do I. So Vice Mayor Story, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to maybe direct our attention to one other CIP project, and it could maybe be rolled in to when those come back to us. But lately, I've heard a lot of comments from residents about the speeding on Park Avenue.
Oh, God.
And you too.
I've been walking the street just to check it out. It's bad.
Well, and, and I know, I mean, in terms of budget, you know, the three E's of traffic calming, enforcement, engineering, and education, I would like, I think we should set this as the budget goal, so it's, you know, on our, in our minds, on our focus, attention to try to stop the speeding on Park Avenue. It's not all money, but I think that with a, you know, combination of strategies, we can maybe try to slow things down. So that's, that's my idea.
Okay, did you have any others to add, Vice Mayor?
No, that, that's the only one.
Okay, Vice, Councilmember Bertrand, what would you like to add to the list?
I have two items, and, you know, I would refer these to Steve because I like to know eventually how they jumble into CIP. Item one is the, the little eucalyptus grove at Kennedy and Park. The pathway through there is, I think, a hazard and it needs to be relooked at. It's asphalt that's breaking up and a lot of people are using it right now. They could trip and fall. And then the stairway at the end at the Kennedy and Park needs to be looked at. But I'd look to Steve to give some recommendations on that. So that's one item. The other item is Monterey Park gets a lot of use right now, especially with a recreation director managing the reservations and stuff. So I'd like to propose some, what do you call it, tables there, you know, picnic table type things, so that the, the people that use the park could also enjoy sitting down and maybe, you know, what a picnic table is for. But people come by themselves also. So if you notice the picnic tables in Noble Gulch Park, they're getting a lot of use right now. But, you know, something at Monterey Park would get a lot more use. So that's the other idea.
Great. Councilmember Kaiser, did you have anything to add to the list of priorities this evening?
I think you may even touch on it, but I think we had spoken about it last meeting, but signage is kind of something that we could revisit, whether it's from the parking lot or even as you're entering the village, and could possibly incorporate some of the small businesses. I'm going to, I'll try and work with Kristin to reach out to the BIA and see what their involvement might want to be, if there's like some sort of funding that goes into that through them as well, that might work. But I think just making the village more visitor-friendly might be, might be a good thing with the sign. Thanks.
Great. And then I'd like to add, council already agreed for implicit bias training for ourselves as council, but I also like for city staff to, to have the opportunity to participate in implicit bias training as well. So, and that, that takes some funding there, as well as for us to prioritize the review of affordable housing opportunities in relation to the Capitola Mall and looking at potential community partners. So this will take staff's time to, and effort, and so because of that, I would put it on here as a priority. And building relationships, Jim, is what I, or seeking relationships, community, or relationships. Okay, so those are them. I think the CIP projects will be brought forward to the next one to see if they're fiscally possible. And then, so that's item 40, 41, 42. So we'll start with item 43 and move on. I see your hands are raised, Vice Mayor Story and Vice, uh, Councilmember Bertrand. Okay, so we'll just finish up with item 43 and on for Council, Councilmember Peterson for the, I'm sorry, 42, Monterey Park picnic tables. Do you like that to be a priority?
Yeah, you can just put my agreement for all of the items from 42 through 45.
Okay, that makes it simple for me too. Yes, to all of those. Vice Mayor Story, 42, for the Monterey Park picnic tables. Would you like that to be a priority?
Um, well, I, I have residents requested it, but if, if we have resident demand for picnic tables, sure. It seems like a very, you know, a pretty easy item to accomplish. You want me to go on?
Okay.
Stop there.
Sure, if you're comfortable with just finishing on 43.
Yeah, and let me ask, the signage, wouldn't that be part of CIP? You talk about street signage?
No, lower Pat Cove signage, signs to the beach. There's some in upper Pat Cove, but it's just going to take some funding. But I don't know, is that a CIP project, Jamie? No.
As long as it's with Pat Cove, we, we can take care of it at staff level.
Oh, perfect, so guess what?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine then.
Yeah, Kaiser, Councilmember Kaiser, it's going to happen. So the next one, implicit bias training for staff, we already agreed on council, Jim, so it'd be just staff.
Yeah, I'd say on that, if there was, you know, volunteer, I would agree with it. And prioritize affordable housing, yeah.
Right. And then Councilmember Bertrand, item 42?
Yeah, just a little, little, I'll, I'll go all the way down the ground, just like Kristin did, but a little background on Monterey Park picnic tables, organized a meeting, this is ancient history around the issue of a skateboard park. And one of the things that we thought of at that time was having picnic tables so that the people could watch their kids skate and stuff like that. People in general at that meeting liked the idea of picnic tables, and that was all composed of neighbors up and down Monterey Avenue. I don't know if they'd feel the same right now, but at that time, they were all for the idea because they used the park.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And then, we'll skip item 43, what about 44 for training?
Well, I'm agreeing to all of them.
Oh, okay, fantastic. Councilmember Kaiser?
I'm going to mirror Vice Mayor Story's responses. Thank you.
All right, so we have a first and a second. I'd like to offer a substitute motion for Councilmember Peterson, if, if you would accept the updated budget principles and goals to your motion.
So is that an amendment to my motion?
It'd be a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, Councilmember.
Yes, I will, I will accept that friendly amendment. Are we sure we don't want to make it a budget principle to find ways to make our meetings longer? Because I think we could do it, guys, if we really wanted to.
Hey, 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 I agree with the friendly amendment.
Okay, we have, we have an amendment.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand?
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
I'm going to vote no because I don't understand the reason for removing the parklet and parklet conversation as a goal, but then agendizing it as a separate council item. So, no.
Mayor Brooks?
Yeah, aye. Okay, so that item passes for one. We are not done yet, folks. We're moving on to item 9C. That, Jamie, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, just really quickly, the process check. I, I think I would recommend that we adjust item D on the agenda and either just continue it entirely to next meeting. Alternatively, we could do an abridged version and just get the resolutions approved and then continue the overall CDB conversation until the 11th. I can go either way, but I think we could, we could cover item D if we do an abridged version and just maybe two or three minutes stop presentation, or we could just continue the whole item for two weeks.
Are you talking about 9D or 9C?
9D.
Okay, can we get through 9C first? I don't know if we should just, if that's just going to be a, are you suggesting we skip that one?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to make things more difficult. I just know we have somebody on the call who if we're not going to do larger CDBG conversation at, at 11 o'clock at night, I'd like to be able to get him off the call, that's all.
Okay, I think we can move through this quickly. I think it's, it's possible and we can be done in less than 15, we'll be done by 10 o'clock. Let's shoot for that, folks, as our goal to be done. So we'll, we'll see where we are with 9C. So we're going to move on to 9C. The pressure is on, Mr. Justburg, this item's yours.
Going as fast as I can to get my screen shared. Hope you can see my.
Hope you can see my report. This is a, our, one of our ongoing reports on the library project. In this report, we are also approving change order number twelve. Uh, current status, uh, as you, I'm sure you've all seen driving by it, the building is progressing quite rapidly right now. The exterior finishes of the building itself are about ninety-five percent complete. Interior finishes are being installed rapidly. That includes ceilings, building cabinets, lighting, wall finishes, um, actually some carpeting's gone in. Upcoming, we have book stack installation, more carpeting, signage, and finally some landscaping that will occur in site finishing. So, um, in the next uh six weeks, we hope to uh reach substantial completion on the project. Um, quick history on the change orders, ten contract change orders been previously approved for the city council policy. Uh, since we last updated you on this, we did approve change order eleven, which was done at a staff level, um, based on that policy is for twenty-two thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars for several items of unanticipated work, um, mainly had to do with some materials that we had to deal with, changes in, in just design that were decided were worth going forward and related issues like that. It had nothing to do with the power line conflict. Change order twelve, which is before tonight, um, I'll be honest, one of the more painful change orders I've had to write, completely related to power line issues, um, for five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-two dollars. Um, most of that, I'd say two-thirds of that is compensable delays that the contractor is due, um, due to the delays caused by the problems with the plans. Um, they, but the change order does include changes in how they constructed the roof framing, aden- additional temporary bracing they needed to put in, temporary removing, temporary roofing we put in to make it through the winters, um, without putting in the formal roof, and then we had to remove that. Temporary stormwater plan modifications that needed to be made because we went through another winter and then scaffolding extra cost basically. We put up scaffolding films as much as we could, took that scaffolding down because we couldn't leave it up, Brittany, we were paying a rent on it, and so then they had to come back and rescaffold it. Um, looking at the current financial summary of the project with, so the project budget, which is fifteen million eight hundred and three thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, that's available funding. That's in the staff report, the actual approved budget is fifteen million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do have additional revenue, uh, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that has come to the project and um we're counting that as available funding. It's dedicated for this project. It really, it couldn't go anywhere else. Um, the current project expenses, including change order twelve, are fourteen million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, leaving us a balance of about eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we do anticipate another three hundred thousand dollars in change orders that have not been approved, leaving us close to a five hundred thousand dollar projected fund balance if project close out. So I wanted to slide through some pictures also really quick here, things that, these were taken, I think, yesterday, so they're very fresh. This is the library sign, you can't see it because of the fence around the property, that's at the corner of Whorf and Claire's. So it'd be behind the fence right here. And there's the building with the scaffolding down, looking for more from Claire's. This is coming, looking the other way, this is the entrance. This is the uh, just the other side of the building. I like this picture. I actually haven't been on site because of COVID for a couple of weeks and this deck has gone in. This is the deck behind the children's room, which is right here, uh, that will have places to read and it connects to the top lot there. This is the interior of the main room in the library. You can see the lighting that's going in. This is the finished roof material that is going on, um, makes it look like the underside of a ship. This wall will get some soundproofing and other paneling on it, so you can see definitely work under progress, but we're making forward. So this is an exciting picture of the children's room. This is actually carpeting that has gone in in this room. Um, and it's, all, all of this is tied with the leaf motif, referring to bringing the leaves from the park outside, so we have leaves on the carpet here, which finally fade away into this marbled carpet. We have a reading nook here, um, kids are able to sit in these little cutouts here, read and have the leaf structure. And then we have the, the public art that's part of this is uh hanging leaves from the ceiling. So that's quite a, a dynamic room, it's gonna be a lot of fun. So our recommended actions tonight is to receive the report and approve contact change order twelve with auto construction for the Capitol branch library in amount of five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-and-four, four-hundred-and-two dollars. And I am available for questions.
So much. And I, we're gonna move to council questions. I see Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, Mayor, is it appropriate? I have a question about the oak tree that's next to the porch that's being built.
You know, I, because this is just for the approval of the change order, perhaps you could ask staff offline about that?
Okay.
If that's the right, okay. Thank you so much. Um, any other questions? Okay, any uh questions of the public at this time? Okay, we'll bring uh Larry?
I do not see anyone uh with requesting any comments on this side of Mayor Brooks.
Thank you so much, Larry. Okay, we'll bring this back for council deliberation and a vote. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
One more second?
I thought I saw, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw Margo's mouth move to say second, but I didn't hear it, so I wasn't sure.
I did both things, but.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Kaiser. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand?
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye.
Mayor Brooks?
Aye, thank you so much, Steve. I know it's been a long night. I love that library sign. My daughter saw it and just freaked out. I'm so excited.
Okay. Thank you for your support.
Yes. Item nine Z, I wanted to say thank you very much to our presenter who waited all night to address council. Um, so we're on item nine D, adopted resolution approving a community development block grant coronavirus number two application. Let's do it.
All right. Can you see my slides?
Yes, Katie, thank you so much.
Are you awake?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna quickly go over the recent direction we got and tonight I'll be asking you to adopt a resolution. Following that, we've got an update from Paul Ashby, who is our CDBG grant administrator. He's worked uh for the city for years, administrating CDBG grants for the city as well as home grants. So quick overview, um, as you know, the CARES Act passed in March of twenty twenty. We went through the first round of CARES Act funding. We're now entering into the second. In the second round, there's three hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars available for Capitola. Um, two requirements are that first, there's a public hearing, um, for the public to comment on the, the money and funding, and that occurred on January twenty-eighth. Second, we need to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the application and administer the grant, and that is uh what I'll be asking you to adopt this evening. The funds can be used in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic for preparation, prevention, response, and recovery of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, there are four types of activities under CDBG. First is public services, second, public facilities, third, housing for the homeless and economic development. Um, during my last update, I let you know that there's sixteen-plus million dollars in rental assistance that's going to go through the Treasury Rental Assistance Program. It'll be administered by the state, so it's really exciting and it'll be available countywide. Our uh local residents will be able to apply for that funding. Um, and during our first round of CDBG money, we put a lot of money towards food distribution and the discussion was that in the next round, uh, the city council was interested in utilizing money for economic development and grants. Um, so here's the first round of funding that was approved by the city council. We are still waiting for the agreement from the state. We got preliminary approval, but the funding has not come in yet. We're hoping to receive that in the next couple weeks or at least in the next month. Um, for round two, um, as I stated, there's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars available in funds. In this next round, because we did three activities in the first round, we're limited to one new activity and we can fund up to three previous activities. When we met on January twenty-eighth, the city council directed staff to put forty-five thousand dollars towards previous activities, so that's fifteen thousand dollars to each um activity for gray bears, second harvest, and community bridges. They're very grateful they get that news. And the, also council um asked that the remainder of the money be utilized for, to cover administrative costs of administering these grants. Um, and uh the rest put towards economic development, in which um the direction was for grants up to seven thousand five hundred dollars to cover rent and utilities. We're waiting from the state to bring out more guidance on exactly how we can, uh, guidance on those grants. So we haven't gotten that yet. Once we do, we'll be meeting with our ad hoc committee, uh, Paul Ashby and I, Larry and I, and um to set up the guidelines for the new grant program. Um, we will be working with the partnership with SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, uh, out of Cabrillo College, who has uh so generously offered to run this grant for free for us so that it granted, it um supported an extra seven businesses. Um, so once we've set up the guidelines with, um, then we will submit the application to HCD. So tonight, um, the one action I'm asking for the council to take is to adopt the two resolutions, which would authorize the city manager to submit community CDBG CV uh applications requesting up to three hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars of CDBG CV round two and three grant funds for the COVID-nineteen relief programs and to execute the grant agreement upon reward. And then next, I'd like to introduce Paul Ashby, who it's been a pleasure working with, and as I've said, he's uh helped the city with home grants in the past and CDBG grants. And as we're going through this uh process of um getting more money for the, through the CARES Act, um, all of our neighbors have been asking, you know, how are you guys getting such great help and who's helping you out? So he's in high demand and we're really lucky to have him. So Paul, with that, I'll let you take over the screen share, and you can jump into your presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, uh, Katie, and good to see everybody, uh, mayor, members of the council, uh, city manager. Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna share a screen here and see if we can get this going here. Can you see that screen?
It's loading. There it is.
Okay. So as Katie mentioned, we are going to briefly discuss the uh CDBG world, the Community Development Block Grant Program for the general cycle. Um, we've spent a lot of time on the CARES program, um, which runs through CDBG, but every year they also have a uh notice of funding availa- notice of funding availability at NOPA, uh, every year for an allocation of funds that they come out with that folks get to compete with. So I am going to give you a brief overview of that program and then take any questions that you all might have on it. So just quickly here on the CDBG program, just to give members of the council just a brief overview, if you're not familiar, um, this was established back in nineteen-seventy-four through the Housing, uh, Community Development Act. Um, it's a federal program that runs down through the state. Um, the purpose of it is to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities for folks that are low to moderate income. Low to moderate income in CDBG world is eighty percent or below the county median income. So that's always our focus to be fun. Uh, and then you have two programs under CDBG entitlement versus non-entitlement. Uh, and just to let everybody know that if not aware, you're in the non-entitlement community, um, along with oh, a hundred and fifty odd other cities, counties, and the state that, that compete for these funds. And if you're in the entitlement community, HUD gives you a direct allocation every year. So that's why we're talking about this NOPA, uh, to see if there's any uh desire by the council to pursue some of these funds. So again, just to reiterate, you are a non-entitlement community, so you'll be competing for these funds if we choose to do so. Um, on January twenty-ninth, HCD, Housing and Community Development Department, uh, released their NOPA for thirty million dollars. Um, the, the amount of funds, you know, seems to keep shrinking each year, obviously depends on the administration that's in office. Uh, but again, that number is thirty million and that's statewide, just to remind folks um, uh, on this call. Um, funding can be used for a wide range of things with CDBG. It's, it's one of the most multifaceted grant programs, which is why a lot of folks like it. Um, housing, public services, economic development, infrastructure, um, and more. I'll, I'll go into each of those just a little bit here in a moment. Um, and again, I just wanna reiterate that, that a national objective always has to be met with CDBG. I list all three there, um, benefiting low moderate income persons, aid in prevention of slums and bites, and meet an urgent need. Uh, ninety-five percent of the time, maybe more, that, that's going to be a benefit to low moderate income persons. It's gonna be the national objective that, that we focus on. So in this round of funding, jurisdictions are eligible to submit an application for up to three activities. Um, I've tried to lay out each of the, each one there that you can do, and I'll try to hit on some specifics on it, um, and some things to keep in mind. Um, so the maximum number there you see is one point five million dollars, and we have applications due on April thirtieth, which is about two months away, so it'll happen fast. Um, I go into each one of these on the next slide, so, so I, I can go back to this when there's a discussion, just so folks have these numbers uh in their mind. Uh, quickly here, I'll hit on home buyer assistance program. So this is gap financing, which is, you know, basically a silent second loan, uh, where payments are deferred for borrowers. This is something you can apply for. The borrower still needs to qualify for a primary mortgage, um, and the city comes in, in the back, in the back end of that loan and funds it so that they're actually able to purchase that house. Um, for those of you that are aware, the city previously implemented this program with CDBG money. It was a fourteen contract, um, from the years two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen in partnership with the local housing authorities. Housing rehabilitation program is another activity that's eligible this round. Um, similar to a, to a home buyer loan program, uh, it's a, it's another silent second, so payments on it can be deferred and it's aimed at homeowners in the city that are trying to rehabilitate uh their homes and bring them up to code, alleviate safety, health concerns, weatherization improvements. Um, I, I do always point out to folks that these programs are extremely administrative heavy to implement. Uh, um, it, it's better to work with a, with an organization that, that does this or has experience in it. Uh, you did run this type of program again back in two thousand fifteen, seventeen, um, with that same CDBG grant, and again, that was with the housing authority as well. Public services, um, this is another big one here that, that CDBG does a lot of funding for, um, and a, and, and folks compete for. So the, the CV, the CARES money that Katie just went over, when we talk about, uh, you know, gray bears and community bridges, that's what those organizations fall under is the public services. So this is to pay for labor supplies material, uh, for any type of eligible public service. And there is a huge list that you can do, and I only did a handful here. Um, homeless services, recreational services, like a youth scholarship program, health services, meals on wheels, food distribution, um, crime prevention, we see youth programming that, you know, gang prevention, et cetera. So there's a really lengthy list, um, on public services. Planning and technical assistance, uh, they do allow for us, they, they only allocate a small portion of funds for this, but uh this is really aimed at folks that are looking to get studies done, um, that, that ideally will lead to a feasible project or a program. Um, the maximum on these is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've listed some examples there. We've, we've seen folks use them for master plans, um, CIPs, um, you know, updating your transportation, bike path plan, things like that. Um, and again, the idea is that they, they end up coming to fruition to a project. Um, it's the idea there with, with CDBG. Um, it's the idea there with CDBG. And then lastly, eligible activity is economic development. Uh, this is what, again, Katie was just describing with the CARES Act, um, that's proposed in, in, in your resolution tonight, uh, which is a business assistance program. So again, this is aimed at providing working capital to businesses. These are in the forms of loans or grants, uh, and the idea is that you're assisting these individuals so that they can, uh, retain or create low moderate income jobs. Um, eligible uses there, I listed payroll, rent, utility, equipment, a little wide range of things that you can use them for. Um, and again, you are going to be utilizing your CDBG CV money, uh, for that type of a program. Non-eligible activities, just, I wanted to put these out there for folks. Um, we cannot do any, you know, improvements to general conduct of government type of buildings, uh, no political activities, um, income payments, and construction of new housing. Uh, you can do all sorts of different housing. You can do rehab, homebuyer, you can do multifamily acquisition and rehab, but you cannot do, uh, new housing with CDBG dollars. So tonight, we wanted to give you an overview, um, so that I could just bring this back in front of council. I think it's been a, a few years at least, um, since council and staff has, uh, you know, at least decided on possibly pursuing these funds, and it sounded like this might be of interest tonight. Um, so we wanna, you know, answer any questions, vet some activities that may come up. Um, we would need to come back and hold another public hearing. CDBG is very big on that. We have to do citizen participation, so we would do another public hearing at another date and, and bring back an application and a resolution, um, most likely in April before that deadline, um, of April 30th. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back a slide before I get to questions, and I will turn it back, back to Katie, um, here, and I'm gonna leave this screen up, um, just so that it gives you the, the activities and the dollar amounts that we're looking at. Um, one item, just that I'd like to hit on for public services, 'cause I think we probably discussed that a little bit tonight. It's up to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, you could do, your three activities can go towards public services. So you, feasibly, you could do three activities for up to five hundred thousand dollars total. It would not be five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand per public service activity. I just wanted to reiterate that. So, um, more along the lines of two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, one hundred thousand would be a split that you could do, um, for a public service. So I will leave that screen up if that helps folks. And, um, Katie, I, I can turn it back to you or mayor, members of the council, if you have any questions. Um, I'm, I'm happy to answer, um, anything that you might have.
Katie, you're muted.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Um, I do wanna take a moment, just, um, I, I have taken the time to look through our, uh, grants that we do have, uh, that we've previously funded and were unable to fund this past year. And, um, if the, if the city council were inclined to move towards, uh, funding, going through with another CDBG project, at this time, I think it's something that we could definitely administer, and it would, um, would be to administer public services up to the half a million dollars. I think that is within our bandwidth. I just wanna reiterate when, uh, Paul talked about the homebuyer assistance, it was really finding a needle in the haystack when we, we found, um, one qualified buyer last time we provided that service. And housing rehabilitation was tough, and, uh, we know the, uh, put a lot of administrative burden on our housing authority, and they would not be able to carry that out for us. So I think if, if we'd like to do housing rehabilitation, I would suggest that we look at that, um, as a future program, possibly once, uh, the coronavirus efforts are behind us, and we've administered the CV grants, and then, uh, but public services, uh, the half a million dollars, that could take a load off of your to, your, um, it, it could provide some great money for some great establishments in our area, so.
Thank you, it's very exciting. So I'm gonna, um, go to council for questions, and I think Vice Mayor Story's had raised.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, Paul, for that overview of CDBG. What I, what, my question was, um, I believe I heard you say that there, we would need to have a public hearing to take community input, um, prior to the applications being submitted. Uh, but, um, tonight's recommended action is to approve the resolutions that already, um, specify the recipients and the amounts. So, um, could you reconcile that for me? How, why would we do that before holding the public hearing?
Ab, absolutely, council member. Um, so the resolution and public hearing that you have in, we, we've combined two items, uh, is what's happened. So the, the resolution that you're approving tonight is for your CDBG CV money, your CARES money. And this is their general NOPA, it's a completely different pot of money that we're dealing with. So separate application, separate pot of money, separate resolution. Everything would come back to council at a later date.
Thank you.
Yep.
Council member Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, I think on, um, one of the pages, it says we were gonna get three hundred and thirty thousand in funding, and the other one said three twenty, and I just wanted to make sure that I have it right in my notes. I'm sure it was just like a typo on, on one page or the other. Um, but I was wondering if you could confirm if it's three twenty or three thirty? I think it's three twenty. Is? I think page forty.
Three twenty, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-one.
Perfect, thank you so much.
I see no other questions. Paul, I have a question for you. Um, you've mentioned economic development as a possible opportunity for CDBG grant dollars. Um, Katie, you touched on that it is within our city's bandwidth. Should we be granted the five hundred K for public service? However, if we were to apply for the five hundred K for the economic development, would we have to do something similar to what we're doing now with the CDBG CV dollars and outsource that again? Does that all make sense?
Yes. I believe, I believe so. And, and, and Katie, I'll jump in. Um, mayor, yes, I would re, recommend the same thing. You would wanna partner with somebody, um, like that we have for the CV funds to actually implement that. Um, the CV funds, we're trying to focus those more on one-time grants to try to assist as many folks as possible. Um, to be honest with you, most of the economic development programs that you typically see folks run is much higher limit and much more, I would say there's a focus more on loans and working capital when you do a business assistance program typically through CDBG. Um, so folks, uh, you know, the state's guidelines used to say things like, you should be providing, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars to some of these people. So it's really a lot of working capital compared to what we're describing in the CV grant.
Okay, so the same question is, Katie, have we looked at any possible CIP projects that we would take on? Should we, uh, attempt the other, uh, so there was the public service, there was economic development, and there's one that you could do for a CIP project? Have you looked into that at all as?
So, um, Paul explained to me on a previous call that the CIP projects, they had so many come in during the last round that they actually have an ongoing list, so there's very low probability that we'd be awarded a CIP project because they're continuing to work off the list from the prior year. But.
Okay. That's okay.
And if I may, mayor, I'll add one thing there. Um, on the, uh, when I mentioned CIP tonight, that was directly in reference to doing a planning, planning document only for a CIP, not necessarily a project. And what Katie mentioned is correct. Every year, typically, they allow for you to come in for infrastructure, and last year they did an over-the-counter process, and it got, it was completely oversubscribed. So, um, they are funding down on that list with the money they, they have available this round, so they're not really taking any more applications for infrastructure per se.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so I see no other questions. Anybody from the audience who has any questions or comments at this time for item nine D?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone wishing to comment on this item.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to council comment and deliberation. Um, so we have the recommended action is to adopt the two proposed resolutions, authorize to the city manager to submit the CDBG CV application, um, for round two and three related relief programs, and to execute the grant agreement upon, um, award. And then we are also seeking council, um, recommendation on whether or not to move forward with the additional grant opportunities as presented by Paul Ashby. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so any comments or questions at this, or comments from council? Okay, do we have a motion on the table to adopt item nine D?
No moves.
One second.
Okay, we have a first from council member Peterson and a second from council member Kaiser. I, I saw you were muted, council member Bertrand. Um, can I have a roll call, please?
Council member Bertrand.
I agree.
Council member Kaiser.
Aye.
Council member Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. And then if we can offer, do you need additional recommendation from council, um, on the next steps? Should we take that as a motion? Samantha, would you agree with that as a secondary motion? Or do you just want a consensus from council tonight?
You don't need to make a motion, you can just give directions to staff.
Okay, so I'll take the liberty to give direction at this time, 'cause I promised we'd be done at ten o'clock. It's ten twenty, so, um, if I can get nods from council that we would like staff to move forward with the CDBG grant, um, for the NOPA and bring it back to council for the, uh, prior to the April thirtieth deadline. Is that all you guys need from us? Okay, I see consensus. All right, Paul, I appreciate your time. We've been asking for, I've been asking for this for a long time, and I'm very excited to hear all the opportunities out there. So thank you very much for staying on tonight. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council members. You all have a wonderful evening.
You know, thank you, Paul, for your patience. Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to item ten. Council, fantastic job, hard work, so many hours. Thank you to staff, thank you to our participants for being here tonight. Please remember to find the good in others and yourself. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good bye.